We're gonna just hold out for a few more minutes until Commissioner Heil shows up. He said about two minutes out. Grace? I'd like to call to order the meeting of the San Alina Planning Commission on February 17th, 2015, and ask Commissioner Heil to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have a roll call?
Commissioner Sweeney? Commissioner Heil?
Present.
Commissioner Monette?
Here.
Excuse me, here.
Vice Chair Kistner?
Here.
Chairperson Parker?
Present. Moving on to approval of the minutes, do we have any comments additions to the minutes from February 3rd, 2015?
I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting of February 3rd?
Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kistner?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Heil?
Abstain.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
And Chairperson Parker?
Yes. Moving on to public forum, this is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on items not of interest to the public that are not listed on the agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in discussion nor take action on matters not described on the agenda. Please observe the limit of three minutes.
Jeff Ellsworth, Sylvester Avenue. I'm gonna read a little something from the Brown Act. It says, "Enacting this chapter, the legislature finds and declares that the public commissions, boards, and councils, and the other public agencies in this state exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. It is the intent of the law that their actions be taken openly and that their deliberations be conducted openly. The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created." Recently, three projects have come through San Alina where our zoning has been challenged. On the small winery ordinance, it could have transformed the whole town into a tourist commercial zone. On the Davies project and another recent project, both projects challenged the intent of the service commercial zone as a primarily resident, local serving and not tourist serving. Zoning is one of our insurances, if we research it, that our property values remain stable. That's one of the insurances that we have as citizens. So if you want to change zoning, there's a proper process. And I believe the people who live here need to be allowed to vote on changes like these if we're gonna change zoning, rather than to just change the intent of the zoning as we go. If 51 percent of us think it's a good idea to change zoning, that's what democracy's about. But when you try to rush this stuff through and you give the citizens as little info as possible, as quickly as possible, I'm still trying to find out about an 81-seat food service email regarding the Davies project. When you do this as quickly as possible, when you rush it through and the citizens don't get the information, what you're doing is you're tricking your own citizens. You're tricking them. You don't have to answer to me, or just me, on this. You have to answer to the town, you have to answer to a higher power. It's a question of ethics, it's a question of morality. We all have to answer to our own gods about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellsworth. Would anyone else like to speak at public forum? Seeing none, I will move on to our consent -- oh, I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Faith Ector Meyer. I live on Hudson Avenue. And I'm not sure how long these screens have been up there, but it's a welcome addition as much as I love the picture of Vintage Hall. I think in the future that as projects are presented to you, that they should come with visuals, that there's, that's a perfect venue to have sketches, or pictures, or photos of the projects we're talking about. It's very hard to talk about things just with words when a simple picture with a cellphone will really tell the story. So I think in the future, pictures should be required when projects are presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy Erickson, Scott Street. And I'm here again with a similar request to the one I've made before, but I haven't seen any take-up on it. And that is, I ask that the Planning Commission begin the formal process of establishing a design review board. There is nobody currently in city government offices or working for the city that is current on design review standards and their application in a town with million-dollar properties. A design review board is not just about making things look pretty. A design review board is a highly technical group of people, highly qualified to do what they're trying to do. And this town is way, way overdue for a professional group of people that reviews the designs and recommends them. And it's only going to accelerate as we approach climate change, as more and more traffic becomes an issue, as the property values go higher, and then you will still have to go through the long process it takes to establish it.
Thank you, Ms. Erickson. Would anyone else like to speak at public forum? Seeing none, moving on to the consent calendar. We have two items on tonight's consent calendar. If we could get, does everyone, can we get a staff report, or does anyone have any comments would like to pull any of either of the two items? I'm talking about item five, PL 14-061 on Stockton Street, or PL 14-057, Design Review Exemption on Vintage Avenue. Would anyone like to pull those items? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kistner?
Yes.
Heil?
Yes.
Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chairperson Parker?
Yes. Moving on to public hearings, this item number seven, this was continued from October 7th and December 2nd and January 20th, is a design review for 1269 Allen Avenue. If we could have a staff report?
Sure. I've noticed in the applicant, isn't --
Yeah, I had noticed that as well.
Are you representing the --
Oh, oh, perfect.
Okay, great.
Okay. Not yet. Thank you, though.
Okay, thank you. As we know, this project has been heard by the commission in various forms before, so I'll try and keep this brief. The applicant has significantly redesigned the rear addition since the last meeting. Other additions include an approximately 200-square-foot reduction in size from the last submittal, and 450-square-feet reduction from the original submittal. From original 2,347, now down to 1,898 square feet. As I mentioned, the second story has been eliminated in order to address privacy issues with adjacent properties. The roof has been modified to match the roof on the existing home. A stone base has been added to create continuity, consistency with the stone base of the existing home. The vertical siding has been changed to horizontal siding. The color has been changed to an earth tone in order to better blend with the existing structure and surroundings. The windows have been changed to double-hung windows to complement the double-hung windows on the existing home. And the overall height has been reduced by approximately four feet from the last submittal, from 23.3 to 19.2, and by approximately six, approximately six feet from the original submittal, which was 25 feet, down to the 19.2 inches. The new height is approximately 10 inches lower than the ridge of the height of the existing home. Staff feels that the changes described in the staff report are significant improvement to the plan previously submitted. The commission now needs to determine whether the revised plans allow the commission to make the required design review findings. In the event that such findings can be made, a resolution of approval has been included with the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Aaron.
I have a couple of questions. You're indicating the staff report that the staff received two letters from the neighbors expressing concerns about the project. Are these old?
These, they're all correct.
And we only have the one email that you just handed out from us, from Heather Jordan, were old.
Were old, I think.
From Mr. Fisher.
And that was done before they revised the plans?
Absolutely. And the email sent from Heather and Robert basically reiterates a couple of things they'd mentioned before that are, the drainage issue that are all part of the conditions.
And then I'd also like to know where the, the existing site plan shows with the arrows on, where did that come from?
Those were exhibits that Robert Fisher had provided earlier.
Are they accurate?
They're not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. What do you want, does anyone else have any questions for staff at this time? All right, at that, I would like to open up the public hearing. If the applicant would like to come forward and... Okay, yeah, we can give those to Victor or Aaron. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we'll pull, I think we'll pull those out on an as-needed basis, just... Do we have any tape? Should we put it where the camera can see it? I'm sorry. And just tape it up here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That's the red color? The cream? Oh, okay. I stand corrected. Oh, yes, thank you.
My name is Nicholas Lee, and I'm representing Andrew Meyer for the proposal at 1269 Allen Avenue. And this is an existing home that we are proposing to renovate and add on to, 720-square feet at the rear. The existing house is comprised of a historic section at the front of the property, as well as a nonhistoric section that was added on to. And so we're planning to renovate the existing section, or the existing historic section. We're not gonna touch any of the historic walls or make any fundamental structural changes to the existing historic house. We're just opening up the interior space to have a larger living space. And at the rear of the existing historic section, we're proposing a laundry and powder room laundry area. There's a center section of the house that is part of the overall design that we have that, that's the addition to the historic house. And in this section, this will be the kitchen. And we're, this is in really poor shape. When you look at the actual property, it's kind of falling apart. And we're planning to clean this entire section up. As Aaron mentioned, we'll be renovating this portion of the house from top to bottom. We'll be creating a new stone base that takes us cues from the existing historic house. Taking cues from the historic house, again, we'll be using similar double-hung windows and also matching the roof pitch of the historic home so that the center addition that was added on to, it's the existing now, is gonna blend more consistently with the more dominant, prominent historic brick structure. At the addition, we're adding 720 square feet to create two bedrooms and two bathrooms. Again, this is taking cues from the historic house. We're gonna extend the stone base to the rear of the property at the addition, use the similar windows that is, that are gonna be used for the renovation, that take their cues from the historic home. Use horizontal siding that we feel blends in nicely with the brick siding of the existing house. And we've, we have two color schemes that hopefully will be agreeable with the commission. And then we also have a similar roof form to the existing historic structure. So now I'd like to just point out a couple items from the previous design that was presented. As Aaron mentioned, we have reduced the overall height, so it's no longer a two-story addition. It's a one, or it's a split level that steps down from the main level of the home, so it actually gets lower as you get to the rear. All of this was designed, done in an effort to reduce its mass and visual impact with the neighboring, with the neighborhood and the neighboring properties. There are two, two-story homes on either side of the property that I'd like to note, but this one will fit nicely in between, in between them. We've reduced this house by 200 square feet from the last presented design, as well as lowered the overall height, and have extended some of the existing materials and features a little bit more, I think, cohesively in this design. So we ask for the, for approval on this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant at this time? Okay, thank you. Would anyone like to speak at public hearing, or a public comment?
Hi, my name is Jeff Meyer. I'm Andrew's father. He couldn't be here right now. I prepared a defense, if you will, but I noticed the opposition wasn't here today. I haven't seen his email, so I'd be curious to see what he had to say.
It's just about drainage and fencing?
Yeah, I'd like to see it.
Do you have a copy, Aaron?
He didn't copy me on it, even though we've been trying very hard to work with him. Anyway, I prepared a defense having to do with privacy, light and air, the mass of it, how it looms over the neighbor, the consistency with the historical nature of the neighborhood and the houses, and how the different, the neighborhood's been treated in the past. But we've been here for four meetings, and I don't really wanna waste your time, 'cause I know there's three or four other things coming. So if it's possible, could I just address any issues you have at the end, just before your vote, or should I go through my whole presentation?
Well, we can wait to see if there's any other public comment during, in the public hearing, and then you can come up for a chance for rebuttal at that, at that time. But once that public hearing's closed and the commission deliberations occur, it's, we usually do not open up the public hearing again.
So I wouldn't hear your objections before?
Do you, does anyone have any that they want to voice at this time? Okay, I...
None.
Yeah.
Does that mean you're gonna vote yes? 'Cause otherwise, I'll go through them all.
I think that let's wait to hear from the rest of the public, and then you, we'll invite you back up.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak at public hearing? Okay, I'm gonna ask my fellow commissioners, is there a need for a rebuttal? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing and invite Commissioner to deliberation. Would anyone like to start? I'm okay with starting, if you don't mind. All right. I just wanted to say thank you to the applicant. I'm a little sad that Andrew's not here for taking our suggestions very seriously and listening to us, and coming back to us with a project that I feel is really appropriate for the site and for the neighborhood. I very much appreciate the concern for the privacy of the neighbors and lowering the height and making it not a two-story on such a small lot. And also honoring the historic nature of the existing home. I really do appreciate that. And if you could pass that along to him, I'd very much appreciate that. I do, I would like to have the conditions of drainage and the fencing be written into the, to the resolution. I think that's important to, to take into account. Can we discuss the fencing? Yes, yes. I'm just saying, just as, as an aside, you, well, you'll definitely have a chance. I just wanted to say thank you, because this has been a very long project. It's been in front of us several times. I just wanted to say thank you. It's, it's a home that's appropriate for the site, in my, in my opinion. Now, my only thought on the request from Heather Jordan is that, given everything that this applicant's done, I, I don't think adding the burden of changing their fence line, I, I think the Fishers can build a fence, you know, if they want a different fence. I think what you have is perfect.
I would also like to reiterate, reiterate what she said. I think Sarah's picked it up very well. I also think that they've done a great deal of what we've asked them to do, and I'd like to compliment it a lot. I, I think that in the public work conditions, that the drainage problem is, should be solved. So I don't really think that that's a problem at this point. I'm very happy with the project now, and I really thank them for, for listening to what we had to say. I also like the, if he's interested, I'd like, I like the pepper color, but that's, that's just my own personal preference.
Oh, see, I like the, what's, what's the nut called? The macadamia color. But either would be fine, actually.
Yeah, I agree with, with Sarah and with Grace and with Tracy. You know, I think this is a clear-cut case of, you know, we had a situation, we had a chance to push back and push back, partly 'cause we had a vigilant neighbor, and partly because I think the design, you know, that was designed to kind of our maximum standards within the far was technically, you know, you know, a design that fit the development standards, but, but in reality, in 3D, and by going and looking at these renderings and taking our time and not being in any kind of hurry and listening to the public and listening to the neighborhoods, I think, I think this project gets it right. And it does, it does right by the neighbors of Allen Avenue, and it does right by, by, you know, our town. And I think that we could hold this up as an example of where, you know, we held an applicant to a higher standard and pushed back and pushed back, and, and finally found the project that was right. And I think we can make the findings 6, 8, and 10 that we were having trouble finding, you know, being able to make before with this project that's proposed. I agree with regards to the drainage, the public works conditions, especially number six is, I believe, the, the one that they should, you know, rest, rest assured, that, and it's five and six. So the applicant, you know, should be, excuse me, the neighbor should be more than covered there adequately. I don't think it requires a separate condition. With regards to the fence, you know, maybe this is a chance for an olive branch. They could split the lattice, you know, split the cost on the lattice between the applicant and the neighbor for the extra two feet, but I don't think we should condition the project to have that. I think that's the first step in neighbor relations, is to decide what that, you know, you know, whether that last two feet happen or not. But that's my personal opinion. I could go either way on that, so I'm supportive of the project.
Yeah, I, I agree with all of these comments, so well-stated. And I wanted to, I remember at the last meeting, Andrew just looked so, he just kind of, I wasn't sure he was gonna come back. He kinda said, "Well, I hope you like a little red house in the front of the property," or something to that effect. And I was so surprised to see this, and I was so delighted at the changes that were made, because it's such a great project now. And, and he was so responsive, and I, you know, I agree with, I really thank him for that. And, and also, I, I think Commissioner Heil is correct in saying that it's, this is a, this is the new bar, and this is an example of how it should work. So I totally approve the project at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, not to belabor the point, and I know we have many more items to get to, but I think this is important. I mean, this was, it seemed like it was a nonstarter. It seemed like it was dead at our last meeting, that Andrew was completely demoralized, and, and it was partly this process of going through this and really trying to find the right design. So I think it's a total win. I mean, that structure, having walked through it a couple of times now, is a beautiful old home, and it's gonna be resurrected. I mean, it was completely overgrown in the front, and, you know, it's a jewel of a house built in the 1800s, and there's very few of them, you know, in our city, and this is, this is a great story kind of in the end, so...
Yeah, I definitely was very happy when I started reading the square footage and then saw the renderings, and I was like, "Oh, thank God." I, I would like to say, though, with the fencing, with the lattice, I do think that when neighbors ask for additional privacy of the two-fence lattice, that I think that it should be honored. I, I think that with, with the size of the lot and the closeness of the neighborhood, that it's, when a neighbor asks for it, and it's been a touchy, privacy has been a touchy issue.
Yeah, I'm just not sure...
Would the applicant, is, I mean, I don't think it needs, necessarily needs to be a condition, but, you know, this is the time I am inviting you back up. Would he be okay with adding the extra two feet of lattice on the fence?
My son would probably be mad at me. But I think that's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. This neighbor got a project approved on his site after we applied, and his project is taller than ours, longer than ours. It overlooks the neighbor on his north side, the entire length of his lot, except for 12 feet. He goes from the setback at the front, all the way along is a 12-foot gap, and then there's, and then there's another barn. And at the meeting where, where he was approved, you said he has been so compassionate to his neighbor to put his two-story addition in the back, but he has, he has like 15 windows on the back of that house that look into the neighbor's lot. And he had the gall to come here and complain for four months that we were, that we were terrible.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a note to the lattice?
But he failed, he failed on every single point that he objected to us on. And I'm surprised you didn't laugh him out of this council, because he was ridiculous. And to ask for this, he can put up a fence?
All right, okay. There's our answer, then. Thank you very much. I'll pull the, I'll pull the lattice. Do we have a motion to approve?
We find the project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15301, Class 1, which exempts a minor alteration of a private structure, and the Planning Commission determines that the project is in compliance with the following design review criteria and approve the project.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kistner?
Yes.
Monette?
Yes.
Sweeney?
Yes.
Heil?
Yes.
Chairperson Parker?
Yes. All right, thank you very much. Moving on to item number eight, this is a use permit and design review for 1915 Main Street, the Los Alcoas Hotel. If we could have a staff report?
Yes, Chairman, members of the commission, let me just kind of summarize quickly what is before you with this application. The Los Alcoas Hotel was approved back in 2010 for a total of 57 rooms, and they're coming back in now to add 13 rooms. In effect, what they're doing is taking what's referred to as the Palm Building and adding another story to the top of that. In terms of the site plan, it's essentially remaining the same, because the, the building addition is within the existing footprint of the, of the Palm Building. Parking's being added, corresponding to the number of rooms being added, and primarily those are kind of a tandem, compact arrangement. But once again, the site plan really is not changing much to accommodate the parking, and doesn't really change at all in terms of the rooms on top of the, the existing, or the proposed Palm Building, going from two to three stories. In terms of architecture, the additional story on the Palm Building is designed to match the approved architecture for the Palm Building, so it'll be consistent and work with the rest of the architecture for the site. In terms of environmental review, there, an addendum has been proposed for this project, and let me just give a little bit of background. Essentially, the state law CEQA provides that if, if a change to a project is so minor that it's not gonna have any significant impacts, you can do what's called an addendum. An addendum, you're in effect saying that you've looked at the, the new situation, and you looked at the proposed project, and the previous environmental work in effect is adequate for this project. And if you can see from the scale and scope of it, it's adding a total of 13 rooms in terms of traffic. That's six additional trips, peak hour on Highway 29, which is a percentage or, 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 you know, net addition is, is pretty much close as to zero as you can. The applicant is going to be paying for traffic improvements under the original use permit. And then the other sort of key issue, with traffic being one and water being the other, the applicant has indicated and submitted a water analysis indicating they can live under the current water agreement, so that there should be no additional water use. Jerry Haig is here, the consultant that prepared the addendum, and he can help or answer any questions that you may have on the addendum. An issue that's come up, I just received a number of emails concerning it today, and I just thought I'd address it briefly, is the whole issue of trees on the site. And this property had a number of significant trees, heritage oaks, et cetera, and most of those trees, pretty much all of those trees have been removed. And we've been working with the applicant on this, I know the tree committee has had some serious concerns about this. I'd just like to, to make the point and clarify that the issue before the commission is the 13 rooms. It's not this other, but related question as to the applicant's compliance with the conditions of the 2010 approval. So it's, it's a little bit of apples and oranges, although I can say that if the commission feels it's necessary, we're adding a story to the Palm Building, and if additional, if the commission feels additional planting landscaping is needed, from a screening point of view, that definitely is consistent and fits under the, the umbrella of what's being considered tonight by the commission. And just to summarize, then, staff is recommending approval of this project. Typically, a use permit and DRB is an action item or an act, an item the commission can approve, because in this case, it's going to require an addition or, or increase to the limit in the number of hotel rooms in the city, which will have to go to City Council. It, it makes sense to have, for this item, the commission recommend to City Council on the use permit and DRB, so that Council will have before them all the, the relevant actions for the project. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. The architect is here, and he can go through and describe, along with the applicant, what's being proposed. I believe he also has renderings depicting the additional story being added to the building.
I did have a question for you. For, with going to the new building, adding that third story to the Palm Building, it's, I, you know, I asked the applicant, I did meet with the applicant, to disclose that, about staying within the footprint. As long as it's in the same footprint, that's, that's fine, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so adding a, an additional story isn't going to be, doesn't trigger the significant change aspect of it?
No, no, it's, if, if it moved into areas, let's say, in the creek or other areas that had not been built before, it would be an issue, an issue, but in this case, it's within the exact same footprint, so literally, you're just making the building taller, there is no net impact on the site from that standpoint.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for staff at this time? All right, I'd like to open up the public hearing and hear from the applicant.
I'm going to make a presentation from here with the chair. My name is Richard Harper, I'm the project architect for the project, and with HR Group Architects. What we've brought here is the, a rendering of the overall site, and this is what you basically saw when the project was approved previously, except now we're adding, we're proposing to add another story to the Palm Building, which is along York Creek. And I think it's important to point out that that's, that's the location, it's right along the York Creek. So we're still maintaining that, that historic view of the Acacia House, and we're protecting this whole front area with the proper screening, so that you'll still see the Acacia House. This increase in height won't affect that original desire to maintain that historic Acacia House view.
Excuse me, should the applicant be at the microphone?
Oh, yes, if you could speak into the micro, oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I could speak into the microphone. If you could speak into the microphone, that way it can be, they can pick it up at home.
So, okay, this is the proposed second story on the Palm Building. It's located adjacent to York Creek, and it's, it's, I think what we're doing here is we're protecting that, that visual impact from the street to the Acacia House that everybody so much appreciates. So we're not affecting that, and, and we're within the 35-foot sep, or height limitation, so it falls within all the requirements of the zoning ordinance. So that's, that's one rendering of the overall site, and then we do have another rendering.
Oop, back into the microphone, please, sorry about that.
Rachel, back in the mic.
Yeah.
So we have a second rendering that shows what the view would be driving up the driveway to the front of Acacia, and off in the distance, you would see the extra story of the Palm Building. So we have these two renderings to share with you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Would anyone else from the applicant like to speak at public hearing?
Hi, good evening, Commissioners, this is, my name is Gunit Bhajra, on behalf of my owners for Los Alcoas. Thank you for hearing our thing today. Commissioner Kistner, I hope you're feeling better.
Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the applicant, you know, just a brief context, we, we've been involved in this project since 2010. We've been here before you on a, on a related subject before. We feel that adding 13 rooms to an existing 57-room gives us the economic viability and sustainability in this, in this town to carry on for a long time. Los Alcoas is under construction. As you can see, buildings are going up. We anticipate opening in spring of 2016. The, the exist, the additional 13 rooms alone will generate more than $250,000 in anticipated TOT revenue for the, for, for the city, and we're looking for an approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at public hearing?
My name is Polly Ogden. I live at 1850 Grainger Way, which is the Quail Meadows Homer Association, right behind what, where this project is. I'm the, on the board of directors in the Architectural Committee. And unfortunately, my own fault, or our fault, we didn't pay enough attention to this project when, in 2010, when we should have. So we're sort of stuck with it, but I wonder, because as it's being built now, it has great impact on probably six of the homes at least in, in the Homer Association property. The fact that they took down the trees has greatly impacted our privacy. And I know that's not a part of this, but it's something that needs to be brought to everybody's attention. I also question that 13 more rooms is an increase of 22%. That's, that seems like a lot, and I also wonder whether that wasn't intended when they built these buildings or presented it first with the 57, that they intended to come back and ask for this addition later on. The height of this new building does not impact us because, mostly because it's right next to Berenger. But I am fearful that, as I look at this rendering, and I see what it does, and it has no, architecturally, has no connection to the historical building there. From our perspective, it, it looks like sort of a big Motel 6 on the vineyard, that that's going to be what Berenger's going to be seeing. And I don't know how much tree coverage and how much protection they have from their side, but we have another beautiful historical building that might have to look at something that is not in accord, I don't think. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Stevenson. I live on Chibley Court in St. Helena. And I think that, I, I really want to get on record the historical process for this hotel, because I think that when we start talking in 2010, we're leaving a lot out. And the original property consisted of, back in the early 2000s, consisted of 22 legal units and about that many more illegal units in the mansion and the buildings surrounding it. And these were studios and one-bedroom apartments primarily, and they were housing restaurant workers, hotel maids, seniors, et cetera. So the original proposal for the hotel project was to title for 35 rooms, and they paid a $500,000 commercial fee for that. Then the Presidio Group decided to sell it, and so they hired a local entrepreneur who came back, and, and the original one had 22 units of studio housing, for affordable housing, for employee housing on the property. So the entitlement included 35 sleeping rooms and 22 rental units, and a $500,000 fee. So then they hired a locals rep, and he came back, and he got the council to increase the, the room count to 57 rooms, 22 more rooms, and they eliminated the 22 affordable houses, 25 of affordable studio apartments. And, and, and to do that, they ponied up another $250,000. So in essence, our city sold 22 workforce housing units for $11,363.63 apiece. That was before this group came. But I think we need to understand that that happened, because this is yet another example of how we are, well, I'm not even going to go into that. So now we have this new and approved entitlement, and it was sold to the Presidio Group. They came back and asked the City Council to guarantee cash flow from the city funds, and the council voted to do that, four to one. So they stated they needed that to secure financing. Now, my personal opinion is that's dangerously close to a gift of public funds, but it was done. Now they're asking for 13 more rooms. So history tells us, on this property, this request means two things: either they're having trouble with financing, or they're sweetening the deal for a probable sale. So my question is, if there's 70 hotel rooms, plus a restaurant, plus a spa, that's a minimum of 100 employees, and I'm being very conservative on that. So that's, are these commuters included in the traffic pattern, in the traffic study? Because there's no way those people are going to live in town, because there's no housing. The project also had conditions of approval. Is, what's a floor-area ratio? How does it affect that? I'm almost done.
You can ignore it.
And also, this historical, this was an historical site, and there was historical review considerations when this project started, and including in that were the oak trees. And so now we're saying the oak trees are a separate deal. The oak trees were part of the original entitlement and part of the historical nature of the, of the property. And now we're saying, let's look at that separately, let's give 13 rooms away and deal with, it's like, it's like rewarding bad behavior. I, I know that we need the tour, the TOT on this badly. It's our biggest chance to increase our revenue in the city. But I also think we're bending over a little bit on this, and we have been for many years now. And so I'd like to see at least some connection between employee housing, oak trees being cut down when they're not supposed to, the historical references that were part of the original entitlement, before we just glibly give away another 13 rooms because we have dollar signs in our eyes. Thank you.
Thank you. Please no applause. Thank you.
I'm Bill Savage, 1825 Grainger Way, in the same development that has to look at the back of this architecturally-designed facility. She took all my thunder, but I do know something, I do, wanted to point out something, we have that sign up there, City Housing Update, Housing Element Update, and I was looking through that in preparation for that, and I noticed something that said we have limited water, this is in the draft form, of course, and we must prioritize water for, for the proposed development, that, for housing for people who work here. You know, it's, yeah, they don't, they're going to use less water now, isn't that amazing? They, they have 13 more rooms and a lot less water. So I, I looked through that, and I would think that, given the cost of St. Helena water, that the current proposal would incorporate those lower-flow devices as well. They should be encouraged to do that, I think, you know. I would be in favor of the additional square footage if it could be applied to some kind of workforce housing on the site. Maybe that would offset some of the 40 units that we lost in this process. So we've gone from 35 and 22 to 70 and nothing. And the 750 in housing trust fund money that's put here, I'd just like to tell you about the last sale in town that I've been aware of. I'm not in the business anymore, so I may be out of date, but it was a little house on Allen Street that's a tear-down, and it went for 950, just like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at public hearing?
Hi, Steve Goldfarb, Bella Vista Way in St. Helena. As Bill said, Mary stole most of the thunder, but I would like to get back to some understanding as to where we were and why we're where we are today. And the first question I have, and I guess it's a question to staff, is, did the developers submit to you a financial analysis that showed that this project didn't make any economic sense unless the city gave them 13 more units? I raise that now because when this project first came before the city, that question was raised to the then-city staff and asked, when, when they were told they couldn't put the housing units on there, and they couldn't afford to pay for more housing off-site. Turned out that nothing was ever submitted to the city, and the city just assumed that the developer was, you know, telling the truth. Not that the developer was necessarily not telling the truth, but, you know, there's always a question as to whether or not it makes any economic sense or not. But in this case, the developer's coming in and he's asking the city to give him something and to get nothing in return for that. And I understand, you know, it's always great to get some more taxes, but everybody that comes before you that asks for any development could stand up there and say, "And guess what? I'm going to pay more taxes, because I'm going to build some property here." My concern is, did that analysis take place? Do we know whether or not this is needed? If it is not needed, then it's a decision that you can make as to whether you think this is in the best interest of the city, rather than, "Oh, this project may go under, because if we don't give them another 13 units." But finally, to me, the question is, you heard about the 22 units that have disappeared in terms of affordable housing, and the developer's predecessor who agreed to pay $750,000 to replace 22 units, which is about a nickel on the dollar, for what it's going to cost this city to build housing in the future? And now, if the city is going to look at this developer and say, "You can have 13 more units on behalf of those people that need housing in this city and can't afford it," my question to you is, how much more money is this developer going to pay the city for the right to get 13 units, now he's not having to buy the land again, or, these are, these are cheap units compared to the units that he had to build in the first place? And we got $750,000. We should be looking at substantially more money for housing to cover not only what this project should be paying in the past, but also the burden that 13 more units is going to have for people who are going to be now hired and working at this facility with no place to live in St. Helena, and we should provide funds so that they can live here in this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm a little late. Had to change my clothes, I thought it was going to be 70 degrees.
It was chillier today than it was supposed to be.
And then I got hungry. So I just wanted to follow in the support of Mr. Goldfarb, in that, over the years, I've been to so many of these meetings, and affordable housing is a big issue. and affordable housing is a big issue. We all have different opinions about it. But in this case, I was here for the meetings for Grand View. I was here when they said, "Well, we just can't do that, and we'll have to put money into a fund." And now they're back. They want more units for the hotel. This seems to be a strategy that goes on quite frequent over the years. It's, we ask for the minimum, and then later we come back. That's the strategy. I'm assuming that, I'm not sure of that, but I'm assuming that that seems to happen quite a bit. Because of that, I agree with him. I think that you should ask for some more money, either to put into the fund or have some more affordable units. The city is always having a problem with divisions within the community and the residents regarding affordable housing. I think it has to come from a variety of sources, including businesses and commercial ventures, the residents, and also the federal government, and whatever money we can get otherwise, and donations. I think this is an opportunity to get some more, and I think you have to ask for it. That's all I have to say for that.
Hi, I'm Carol Troy. I'm on the Tree Committee. I was just curious about a number that was mentioned. They said that the extra thirteen rooms will be bringing in $250,000. That's a quarter of a million dollars. It's a very flashy number. I was just wondering, over what period of time? How are we getting a quarter of a million dollars from these rooms? I don't see, you know, what's the financial analysis of that quarter million dollars? Is that over fifty years? Is that over how many years?
It's a year.
Over one year, a quarter of a million dollars? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm David Graeble, and I'm here on behalf of Latinos Senios de Napa, which is an advocacy group for affordable housing. We have been in some controversy with this city for a number of years around its lack of affordable housing. And I was coming to see what was going on with the housing element, but I'm shocked that the city has given up. The city, knowing that it has a dire need for workforce housing for people who work here, has given up twenty-two units of affordable housing, $11,000 apiece on this project, this hotel project. I mean, it says a lot about the priorities that the city government has had. And I know the city government has changed, this commission has changed, but it says a lot. If this developer wants to add some new things to the project, get those twenty-two units back first. Make sure, another point, you can't, right now, your general plan is frankly not valid. And you can't make any findings that what he's asking for is consistent with the general plan because your housing element had to be approved in force by January 31st, a couple weeks ago. So the city's hands are tied as of this point until it goes through a housing element process, gets an approval from HCD, and adopts that new housing element. So I think at a minimum, any further discussion of this ought to be deferred until you have a valid general plan. There are sequel issues that I don't think have been addressed. There are traffic impacts, obviously, from a hundred new employees, as Ms. Stevenson pointed out. And we share those. The people that work in this hotel shouldn't have to drive from Vallejo or other parts of Lake County. They should be able, if they choose to, to find housing they can afford for themselves and their families in Sanlina. So thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Faith Echtermeyer. And in my opinion, these thirteen rooms represent stealth development. They were, they were being presented to us very late in the game. And the idea that you can add thirteen luxury rooms with wonderful bathtubs, rain showerheads, fresh towels in the morning, fresh towels in the evening, and use no more water, no additional water, that's magical thinking. We are, against all odds, Sanlina right now is in an amazing position of having full reservoirs. But if you've flown over the Sierras lately or read the sports page, you'll notice there's no skiing because there's no snow, which means no water for the Bay Area. And we have many projects that are in the planning stage, as well as other hotels and housing. Where is the water for that going to come from? I do not think it's fair to add more rooms to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at public hearing on this before I invite the applicant back up?
Good evening. I'm Pam Simpson with the Sanlina Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to speak in favor of this project. I'm not going to talk about the history, but I'm going to talk about the present day and what's in front of you. And that's a staff report showing minimal impact to the current application. So what we're talking about is a business that's doing what it needs to do to be economically viable and sustainable in this town. They are going to be bringing visitors here at a high-quality level that will enjoy all the other services we already have. They are, they have done their homework. They know what they're doing. They've done this in many parts of the world, not just the country. And I think at this point, to the, you know, what is in front of you is everything that you need to decide that this project should go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at public hearing before I invite the applicant back up? Seeing none, I would like to invite the applicant back up for rebuttal.
Thank you. Just a couple of clarifications. We bought this property in 2010, 2011, the greatest recession, you know, this country's seen in seventy-five years. At that time, in order to get financing for the project, we were required by our bank to see whether we can get some credit enhancements. We came to the city. We worked out a plan, but for the record, we never used it. We never went back and never formalized. There was no agreement. So there is no fund for our hotel. We continue to work very hard at this property. I'm very sensitive to our neighbors', you know, desire for privacy, as we are for our own clients and customers who are staying here, because this is indeed a five-star property, bringing people who want to have five-star experiences worthy of Sanlina. We've been, been, you know, a conscientious and responsible citizen. We want to make sure that the water agreement is, you know, it's there, and we want to stick to it. If we go over it, there's a severe penalty for us. And it makes sense for us to stick to it. We're putting plumbing fixtures, using well water wherever necessary to make sure that we are a, you know, a responsible corporate citizen of this town. On the tree, we were very, you know, very, we had some palm trees. We relocated within Sanlina. The tree in question was one oak tree, which was going to get traumatized during the construction. So based upon the arborist report, that tree was taken down. That was the only tree. We will be planting many trees on this town. They'll be landscaping all around. The new additional rooms are obviously screened because they're facing Berenger, and they have high trees. But I just wanted to put it on the record that every decision we make at this property, we think four or five times before we do it and go do it the right way. The thirteen additional rooms represent an opportunity for us to bring the kind of, you know, groups into this town, which the city needs. It's a win-win-win. We are under construction. We're not impacting the site plan. The TOT is a real number. It's a yearly number, which represents an immense amount of opportunity for us to do other things in this great town. I live in Davis, and I understand, you know, the importance of being responsible. We built a hotel on campus, at UC campus, a Hyatt Place, and did it in a perfectly responsible manner, making sure that we were part of the neighborhood. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and invite Commissioner deliberation. Would anyone like to start?
Yeah, first, I have a couple of questions of staff.
Staff, yeah, I do as well.
You know, with regards to the allegation that our general plan is not, no longer in force, if you could just comment on that briefly, Victor, that would be helpful.
Yes, the allegation is not correct. The state approved an extension. The gentleman was correct or is correct that the date previously was January 31st. Based on the state extension, the new date is May 31st. So the city's general plan is valid. And frankly, not having an approved housing element by state HCD doesn't mean your housing, your general plan, is no longer viable, and no development or anything can happen. There's plenty of cities throughout the state that do plenty of things with a housing element that's out of compliance. But in any case, ours isn't, and the date is May 31st.
Okay, I had another question with regards to the water agreement. So on a typical development that we see, you know, whether it's a use permit or a design review, kind of in the Dunn Downtown Business District or even a house, typically, there isn't a water agreement between the city and the customer that limits their consumption, except for on larger projects. Say, like, we saw one for Harvest Inn when they redid and remodeled. And so that is really like, if you will, a maximum limit that they can't pass. And if they do, there's severe penalties beyond, a gallon beyond their spelled-out water agreement. Is that, is that right?
That's correct.
I mean, with smaller projects, there's like this theoretical use and a baseline use, and we have to look for net neutrality based on that.
So just to clarify, it's not what's in the water usage in front of us right now. It's actual practical water use that actually will happen. If they go over what they're agreed upon...
Right. I mean, what the analysis is intended to show is the applicant's intent, and their stated purpose to operate under the existing water agreement. There's analysis and calculations in the staff report that demonstrate, from their perspective, how they're going to make that work and meet those numbers. The fact is, as indicated by Commissioner Heil, if they don't meet those numbers and abide by the water agreement, there are penalties. So it's more than simply it being an estimate, and everyone hopes it works out in the end. It's a, it's a hard number, and there are implications to not meeting that number.
And again, for clarity, they are not asking for additional water?
No, it's, what they've indicated is they feel they can operate under the terms of the current water agreement, based on the analysis in the report.
Thank you. I had the same question. Thank you, Matt, for bringing those up.
Another question, with regards to FAR, was there an analysis done? Because we're adding, obviously, square footage in terms of the floor area ratio. I know this is a service commercial, so the FAR calculations are much higher than in residential, for instance.
I had another number off the top of my head. I know this project is well within, so that they're not over the FAR, just for clarity.
And then I guess I had a question for staff in regards to the need for the cash flow guarantee from the city. That wasn't tapped because they received financing, and that's fine? Or is that still open for, are we still possibly on the hook for that?
Well, you know, the applicant has indicated that they have not utilized it. It's my understanding, and the applicant can correct me, that that agreement, or that possibility exists, and the applicant is not exercising it. But I believe the possibility or the use of that loan mechanism is still out there.
And I wasn't part of the negotiations with that, but is there an expiration date on that cash flow guarantee?
You know, I'm not familiar with the details of it. I couldn't tell you what the date is. I'm sure there is a date.
It's just for financing. All right, thank you.
That's what it is, rather than a cash flow guarantee.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for staff?
Does that mean that when the project is finished, that would be the end of the credit enhancement?
Oh, definitely. I think as Commissioner Heil indicates, that the more security you have on the financing of a project, and the better the pro forma looks, the better financing you can get. So I think the applicant has used it as a strategy to get a better, leverage to get a better loan.
Would it be helpful for the public if you walk through the TOT calculation? Because to help the public understand that that's a real number and a achievable number?
You know, I don't have the calculation in front of me, but I can tell you how it's done. And the number for the hotel as a whole is well over a million dollars a year to the city. And to make it clear, that is a huge number. This is not simply another project. This is not a project that comes along every month, two months, six months, even a year. This project being successful, based on, at least from the budget analysis, as was presented to the city council, I believe, at the last meeting, is critical for the city's future of financial health. Hotels are one of the few projects, not a few projects, but in terms of revenue to the city as compared to what the quote-unquote "impact" is, the revenue is significant. Any other type of development or revenue flow, whether it's property tax or sales tax, you have to share that, and the city literally gets pennies on the dollar. On TOT, we get a dollar on the dollar. So the way it's calculated is, you take some estimate of the assumed room rate, base that on a projected level of occupancy, and then base that on looking at over, you know, a year timeframe, and then using the TOT number, which I believe is 12% or thereabouts. And that delivers, for the thirteen rooms, roughly $250,000 a year. And for the hotel as a whole, over a million a year. The numbers for when a hotel is first opens, it's going to have to ramp up a bit, so that that full amount may not be yielded in the initial year. But that's once the hotel is up and running. But just once again, to reiterate, these kinds of projects generate an unusual amount of revenue to the city as compared to almost anything else.
If I could add to that, I believe that this property's looking at an average daily rate of $700 a night, and they're working on an average occupancy rate of 65%, which is very in line with Sanlina. So these are realistic numbers.
I had a question also for staff, sorry, Victor. On the tree removal, was, that was all went through staff with the removing of them? Because I know that when we approved it...
Actually, you know, the city engineer may be able to help me out here, and perhaps the applicant. The, as far as I know, the, from a planning staff perspective, the tree removal permits, I don't believe they went through the city. I think what happened was, based on the plan that was approved back in 2010, there was a bit of a disconnect between the actual site plan and the location of the trees. And to build the plan as proposed, once Gunit and the architect got working on the plan, they simply found there wasn't enough room to preserve all the trees that they had wanted to preserve. And they had an arborist get out there and look at them based on the impact of the construction. So I think in 2010, there could have been a better vetting of looking at the site plan vis-à-vis the location of the trees. Steve, you have any?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that what we're talking about, what we talked to the Tree Committee about is, there was one tree that was shown on the building plan, permitted package, as protect, and that tree was removed. And like Victor said, it had to do with the location of the building and where the tree actually was. And when they got into construction, they realized this tree is going to be harmed beyond saving. And so we ought to just take it out now, rather than leave it and be a hazard. And so that decision was made. And so I just wanted to clarify, it's one tree, a thirty-six-inch oak tree. The applicant has been to Tree Committee to talk about...
The applicant has been to Tree Committee to talk about what can they do to mitigate for that tree? What, what, what is an appropriate level of mitigation as a replacement value?
Okay, thank you.
I guess my, my question, Victor, is does this pencil out with, with 57 rooms as well as 70?
That's an interesting question. I know the gentleman raised the point, you know, has staff seen the pro forma and what does this look like or not look like? That is definitely, the, the whole concept frankly of, of the city getting into a project's pro forma and analyzing and making decision on a project based on that is a real slippery slope. I, I could see it in the context of the city with some sort of financial partner. The short answer, Grace, is no. I haven't seen the financial analysis. What they're doing is they're adding a floor on top of an existing building structure, which has minimizes or avoid any side impacts visually. The additional store is located where it won't have any visual impact and, and they're adding parking, et cetera. So in terms of, you know, the, the impacts, they're, they're really not there, at least they're not significant. But no, we have not seen the pro forma. But from a staff point of view, I would seriously question or consider the, the city getting into that kind of a slippery slope, particularly on the legal ramifications of making decisions based on, on a pro forma. And a lot of that information can be proprietary, et cetera. So, but the short answer once again is no.
Okay, one of, one of the things that bothers me is that every time I see this plan, and I, I've seen it since 2006, not on the commission, but I did in 210, is every time I see it, there's more hardscape and less greenery, environmental. So we're, we're impacting by, by extending this all the time by increasing the amount of hardscape that's on, on the property. And I, I don't think that's one of the things that we want to do.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can add, the amount of hardscaping added by the 13 units is relatively small. The 13 units themselves and their physical location don't add any there because they're on, on top of an exist, or an approved building. There is some minor or a small amount of landscape, and I believe that's taken out. The applicant could probably give a number, but it's, it's minimal and that relates to the additional parking that's needed. Most of that has been accommodated by the, the use of valet parking.
I was wondering, you mean, the city doesn't have any right to that proprietary information? Even though we have the cash load guarantee, that doesn't give us that, that kind of investment? Doesn't give us that?
Well, that was a loan provision, once again, I don't know the details of it, where I believe the city was guaranteeing or allowing the developer applicant to get a loan based on the, the committed or use of security on the loan, the committed or the projected revenue. In, in that kind of analysis and for that analysis, I, I would think we would look at some pro forma numbers, but that's already been done. That exists and I, I don't know what that analysis looks like. What I'm, the point I'm making is to make a decision about adding X amount of square footage or rooms to a project and basing that analysis and decision on the financial viability of it or, you know, how much profit is enough? Is, you know, gee, is this justified or not justified? Would be a very slippery slope and I, I think there'd be some real legal problems with that.
Thank you, Victor. Does anyone else have any questions for staff?
Victor, is this, isn't this building in the floodplain?
The foundation, the footing for the building is in the floodplain. The livable spaces are out of the floodplain. We've been around and around with the applicant on this. The, you know, the footprint of the previous building, it's, it was in the same location. But the, the habitable space, but that way is out of the floodplain, it's above the floodplain.
That, that's because on the bottom story, there's, you know, auxiliary uses? There aren't room, hotel rooms?
No, they've actually removed even the auxiliary spaces. So the area on the bottom, which was not intended to be hotel rooms, it was going to be, or is intended to be health club and sauna, that kind of thing, that is out of the floodplain, it will be out of the floodplain. They've essentially raised the building as from, from the previous approval.
Can I ask us a question of staff? So my understanding of what we're approving or not approving tonight is, is really design review and then it moves on to city council to approve, increasing the cap of hotel rooms. So this is going to fall into a council decision?
That's correct. I mean, actually, it's a use permit because hotels require a use permit and, and design review. But given the fact that the city council, for this to be, go into effect or to be valid, has to increase the hotel cap, the way we're bringing it forward is for the commission to recommend to the city council. So the action by the commission tonight will be a recommendation and the council date we're looking at is March 10th.
Chairperson Parker? I have a quick clarification. I know we were going through this discussion about T O T and an agreement. I just looking at notes here, I want to just add some clarification that there was talk of an agreement for the developer to borrow for the first few years of the P O T if occupancy rates were lower than projected, but that agreement was never finalized and it's not available tonight.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. So I guess, does any, if anyone doesn't have any more questions for staff, we can invite...
I have another question for staff. I'm just warming up.
There's a lot to clarify.
I mean, I, and I think that there's, you know, I think it's important, there's some important points that were raised, some factual clarifications that make their, their game changers. But the thing I'd, I'd like to talk about now, it's kind of switching gears to some of the comments that were made with regard to the history of the project, just in a certain sense, because past is prologue, right? And I mean, so to be clear, because I think it's important to clear people's good names, you know, this group has only been with us since 2011. And so far as I've been on the commission and so far as I've had dealings with them, it's been very upfront and clear and there haven't been hiding of anything. With that said, we know there's a precedence for essentially as hotel rooms were added, there was this, you know, negotiation with the city council about housing impact or housing in lieu fees. Really, we should call it what it is. It's an in lieu fee. And it's my understanding that that power is vested with the council, not with this body. Is that correct?
Correct. And that's, that's an excellent point. That issue is, is, we didn't get into it at the commission level. That issue is going to come up at the council meeting. We've had some preliminary discussions with the applicant about what the appropriate amount is.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I met with the applicant and I asked him if there was any possibility of building some housing on site. And he said that would not be possible, but he was totally open and, and willing to talk about contributing more fees. And I'm glad to hear that. So that's, that wouldn't be a recommendation from us. That would, that's going to happen, that would be determined by...
So to clarify, our recommendation is just the design and use permit for the extra 13 rooms, the, the additional third, third floor?
Correct.
All right.
I wanted to disclose that, the willingness that I had heard from the applicant.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Heil. Would anyone else like to have a question for staff? Deliberation time? Or we could have a motion?
I think we should talk about it.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Who wants to start? Yeah, I, I think, I think I'll start and, you know, and, and, and reserve the remainder of my time after I say a few comments because I think this is, you know, kind of a back and forth. I mean, I think that, you know, residents have raised some, some, some very valid points and we've had some, you know, factual clarifications that I think are important distinctions. I mean, I think it's one thing to say, you know, 13 more rooms, of course, they're going to be using more water. But if the fact of the matter is that their baseline consumption was a million gallons, but they had an agreement that already existed for 1.3 million, we're not actually increasing demand on our water supply, that water was already allocated to this project. So again, the kind of like the, the devils in the details here. We also know, I, I mean, as a matter of planning, as a matter of record, that water consumption is, is actually down in our city. It's actually down greatly. You know, it was down 15 or so percent last year and it's down another 20% over that down, demand down. So, I mean, I think the fact is residents are conserving, you know, and, and people are being much more careful about their water use because we had, you know, a drought condition that, that woke everybody up, I think, to this reality that it's a precious and limited resource. So I, I, I think that the water issue is a big one for me and if it's not explained in that context, then I think it's very easy to think, oh, these commissioners are asleep at the wheel. They're adding, you know, this applicant wants 13 more rooms and they're just willing to say it's not going to demand any more water on the system. And that's not the case. It's, it's a more nuanced than that. In fact, more water may be consumed, but it's already been allocated. So, and then of course, with, with the ultra low flow water, you know, it's, it's in the applicant's best interest to conserve water as well. You know, most hotels, even the fanciest five-star hotels are putting in extremely low flow water, you know, efficient heads. I think of Bardessono. And to, you know, Mrs. Ogden's point, and I think it's an important one, she's a very talented architect. We've seen a lot of her work here at the city. She's very conscientious of our historical character and, and I, you know, to Ms. Erickson's point about how none of us are experts and we should all quit, I think it's, it's really important to notice that there's a historic structure that stands alone and is really going to be restored to its previous grandeur that really, you know, the historical requirement is that the new facilities on the property distinguish themselves from that, that they don't look faux. They're not added on in a, in a way that, that makes it look like they're all the same or they're all historic. So while it seems like they don't family with that structure, that the simple fact of the matter is, I, I think from the street, based on the, all the, all the, you know, all the elevations I've seen is you can't even see them from the highway. You'll only really see the front structure. With that said, it's, it's, they are designed in that same kind of, you know, Bardessono type, very, they're very efficient buildings. You know, there isn't a lot of wasted space. So I heard the comment Motel 6 and, and I really, if they're going to charge $700 a night, I doubt that it will wind up looking anything like Motel 6 when they're done. I was curious to hear from Behringer tonight. Obviously, you know, we didn't hear from them or from a representative because to my way of thinking, if we're talking about design review and we're talking about the impacts generated by this increase to the project, it, it's all on Behringer essentially from their, from the Rhineland House entrance, looking back towards, towards the project. And, and since they don't seem to have any objections, I mean, that may be because, you know, that is a forest of trees and there's some beautiful mature trees, palm trees and everything else. And of course, they're on Behringer's property. I, I really don't think there's any room on the applicant property because they're right into the creek bed, short of planting trees in the bottom of the creek bed of screening of that elevation, so.
And I might interject, I did ask the applicant what Behringer's thoughts were on this and Behringer, he indicated that Behringer was definitely fine with it. And I actually visited the site to kind of get like a visual of it. And right now, you know, it's the middle of February and the trees are pretty barren because it's winter time and it still was, the, the visual was pretty impacted with the trees as they are now. And then in the summertime, when they're all full of foliage, it'll, it'll be even more protected and more screened from, from Behringer and the hotel.
Okay, so in the interest of, of being a little more brief, you know, I, I think that, that the important things are for, for, for council to really look at the housing impact, you know, an incremental 13 rooms is going to generate more, you know, labor, more towels, et cetera, as was discussed by our residents. And I think that that is a, is a discussion that the council must have and can't kind of miss on. I know in the most recent campaign, one candidate who was running for city council mentioned this was the best way to go about increasing revenues to the city was to add rooms to existing projects, which is to say, a project that's already been cut out for, you know, this development and you're not creating another 13-room hotel on a vineyard or in somebody else's backyard.
With another restaurant, another spa.
Exactly. You know, so your, your incremental, your, your T O T is the same if you do it offsite in a different location, but here it's, you're concentrating that, that use and that impact. So, so I, I could be in support of this project. You know, I, I obviously want to hear from the other commissioners based on really this narrow what's before us tonight. I think, you know, Ms. Ectremeyer makes a good point, you know, is this stealth development? Was this snuck, snuck in? It's not fair to add it? I mean, I think that developer really needs to demonstrate to council what they're, you know, willing. I mean, we, we obviously have heard this number and like Ms. Stevenson said, I don't want anybody to have the impression it's, all we see is, you know, green, green, you know, money, money from T O T. With that said, we can't pave our streets, you know, as a city. And this is, as, as, you know, the planning director said, the, the, the most return on investment in terms of use, in terms of tax revenue generated.
Dollar for dollar.
Dollar for dollar, so. Those, those are my thoughts, at least for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Heil.
I would like to echo Commissioner Heil's comments and also add that we want to see, to have this property exist and not be successful doesn't do any of us any good in our community. So I think that we need to take a hard look at the opportunity of what these rooms can bring in additional T O T for their efficiency, for not adding other uses, other restaurants down the road and another hotel project. The ability to bring more rooms without all the other ancillary additional buildings, I think is a, a good thing to look at. And I do echo the thought that when council looks at this, the, the idea of the impact on housing is important. I think we had a lot of good input from the community on what was, what was lost in some of the history of this project. The particular owners, the current owners weren't part of that, so I don't think they should be penalized. But I think that when the council takes a look at this, certainly those, those views should be listened to and, and incorporated where it makes sense.
I, I agree with what Commissioner Heil and Commissioner Sweeney are saying. Can we make some comment in our recommendation that we would like them to look at these things?
Sure, definitely.
Okay, I really think that we should do that. I think we should look at the, the, the housing, the money on the housing and, and the rest of the things.
The trees, traffic, water.
Yeah, I really do. I really think so. But I, I first got the impression from you, Victor, that we couldn't make comments other than the 13 rooms. And I, I found that hard to, to do without being able to stipulate why, why we're doing this.
No, Ed, I'm sorry if I was unclear. I was simply making the point that this whole thing about replacement trees really is kind of a, a separate item and as Steve indicated, is, is being pursued by the Tree Committee. But to, to clarify, any trees needed to screen this additional floor, definitely additional store, definitely.
Well, I think that needs to be in there too, that, that, that this is contingent on them reaching an agreement with the Tree Committee.
Well, did you want to say more?
Well, no, I...
You did look a little pensive there, Victor.
Yeah, and it's, that relates to a condition of approval, a previous condition of approval in implementing that. This is something, something different. So I, I really don't think it'd be appropriate to add that as a condition. I think that is direction that the applicant be directed to work closely with the Tree Committee, particularly between now and the council meeting, to come up with some understanding.
I'm in agreement with what has been said. I, I would like to focus too, though I don't see having to pay higher affordable housing in lieu payments as a penalty. I think particularly with this group, I think they will see it as an opportunity to work with the city and to connect with the city. That's the feeling I've gotten from them all along and I think they're more than willing to, to take that opportunity. And I'm, and so I'm hoping that, you know, that's obviously in the works already. The other thing was Ms. Ogden's feeling about losing privacy. I'm hoping that that will be further looked into and, and any of the other neighbors who are living near where these new, that their, that their thoughts are, are given to the planning, to the city council and considered seriously.
And I'm also in agreement with my fellow commissioners. I just, I definitely, I'm very happy that we can not only recommend, you know, this design review use and use permit, but I also really would like for the city council, those four items, housing, trees, traffic and water. The trees are kind of encompassed the privacy issue that you just brought up because that, that's how the privacy is going to be established. But yeah, I, I'm in full support of the extra 13 rooms, you know, to submit it to the city council for approval, if we can have a motion.
I just want to add one more thing. In, in keeping with the residents' privacy, I think I would, if they... In, in keeping with the residents' privacy, I think I, I would, if they would look at the noise aspect of privacy as well, because it's been brought up recently, as, just as important as a visual aspect of privacy, so I'm, I'm hoping you'll.
Can I ask one more question of staff? Were there any other facts brought up by, or, or comments brought up by the public that we need to address factually, that you heard, that we didn't or didn't notice? Just to have it on the record, so there's not inaccurate things on the record.
Can I just take a quick?
We had the fee, cash flow, the rooms, the TOT, less water, housing.
I think we, I think we addressed, yeah, I, I think we addressed them.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to move, that my motion would be to recommend to the city council that they adopt the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration and accept the required findings and approve the request for a use permit and design review approval to construct thirteen additional hotel rooms at 1915 Main Street, with the comments that are recorded upon the record.
Second.
Commissioner Heil?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette? Commissioner Kistner?
Yes.
Chairperson Parker?
Yes. Thank you very much. I would actually like to call for a short five-minute recess for right now, and we'll re-adjourn at 7:38. I know, you go.
I saw the, the email that you sent with the comments from Alan.
Yes.
So, we should talk about it.
Okay, good, good.
I'm not really available in the morning, afternoon.
That's fine.
But some of the questions about like the flood zone, we might, I think you might be able to, I don't know.
Okay, okay, good, good.
So, some of them seem like, you know, no, no problem, I can still do anything about this.
Okay.
All right, so we're going to resume our meeting. We took a few extra minutes, you know, there's a line. Moving on to item number nine, it's a use permit amendment for 1210 Main Street. The applicant is Sam Dahlia, and if we could have a staff report.
Yes, thank you, Chairperson Parker. The applicant is requesting a use permit amendment in order to modify the inventory approved for sale at 1210 Main Street to eighty percent jewelry and twenty percent other retail items, including art, women's accessories, scarves, bags, and similar items. This tenant's space has an existing use permit to sell jewelry as an ancillary use, not a primary use. The applicant's previous location at 1350 Main Street was 1,200 square feet with thirty-five percent available for the sale of jewelry. That allowed for 420 square feet of jewelry sales. The location at 1210 Main Street is only 500 square feet total. If the applicant were approved to sell eighty percent jewelry at this new location, it would only allow for 400 square feet of jewelry sales, twenty square foot reduction from what was permitted at the, the previous location. The applicant has stated that they offer unique lines of jewelry not available at other stores, thereby helping to diversify shopping choices for visitors and residents alike. Staff is presenting three options for the commission to consider this evening. The commission may choose to approve the project as proposed. This option would approve the sale of eighty percent jewelry and twenty percent other items without conditions limiting what type of jewelry can be sold. The commission can deny the project as proposed. This option would limit the sale of jewelry to an accessory item based on the previous approvals. This would have a cap of approximately thirty-five percent jewelry. As previously discussed, using percentage in the staff report, using percentages as a way of restricting merchandise sales is difficult to implement. Is it based on floor area ratio, percentage of sales, et cetera? However, if the commission selects this approach, staff would work to implement it as best we can. Thirdly, the commission can approve the project with conditions that reflect the type and character of jewelry currently sold by Mr. Dahlia. A resolution with such a condition is included. Staff feels this approach is the most workable, as it meets the majority of what the applicant is requesting. It ensures a variety of types of jewelry stores in downtown and is enforceable from a staff perspective. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
And those conditions are conditions number eight?
Condition eight, correct.
Thank you. Just for clarification of those reading at home.
My question is, do other jewelry store permits define the type of product that can be sold?
I believe some of them do.
Sorry, so some permits already on the books already do describe what types can be sold?
That's my understanding, I mean, it's a mix, I mean, I've seen some that are just percentages, I've seen some that have vague descriptions of things.
And then we had our handwritten one, that was so lovely.
Right.
And for clarity.
Discovery is unlimited.
And for my own clarity, didn't Mr. Bahias, or Bahias, excuse me, Sam's use permit at his original location specify Native American? It had, it did have types of products and very specific things in it. And I'm, Sam is comfortable with option number three, if that's how we choose?
I, I, you'd have to ask him.
We can ask once he, okay, we'll ask him once he's back up. Wasn't sure if you knew already. All right, I would like to open up the public hearing, if the applicant would like to come forward.
I'm sorry. Did I get everybody's size right?
I am not touching it.
No, it's just more of an example of what we actually have. Well, good evening, my name is Sam Dahlia, I am the owner of Povati Collections. I've been a merchant here in St. Helena for almost a half a decade. It's my, Povati Collection is my first business, my only business. Our, our initial concept has changed and morphed over time, admittedly. What we are today was effectively molded from listening to actual customers coming in and asking for things that weren't available in town. There was no malicious intent to deviate from the permit, it just happened over the years, and, you know, it is what it is today, and that's why we're here today. While trying to make things work at what I soon learned was a very difficult location at 1150 Main Street, I think you quoted 1550? It's 1150 Main Street, it's a hundred feet from my new space, ninety-eight feet technically, but, well, trying to make it work, when I first moved in, I learned it was pretty difficult, and I started listening to what people were looking for, and started buying those things, and stopped buying things that weren't selling. It was pretty much that simple. That segment was not being served in St. Helena. And then with the closure of a, a shop that was on 1204 Main Street, it was called Marlow and Company, with that closure at 2011, there was a, a bigger void that needed to be filled for more affordable jewelry in St. Helena. And just a side note, that space was vac- it was a full-blown jewelry store that was vacated, and it was never a jewelry store again, there was a few different tenants went in after that, but there was no additional jewelry store after that space. So, we slowly began to fill that void, serving that demographic, a demographic that can't spend thousands of dollars on jewelry, you know, or somebody just wanted something different. There, you know, there is obviously jewelry stores in town. We found a demographic that can or won't spend thousands of dollars on earrings, they just wanted quality jewelry that wasn't super, you know, expensive. And there is a perception of, of, you know, that most of jewelry in town is higher price point, which it is a higher quality. We have a very unique product mix. That's not only unique, but actually really affordable. Like, my, our average sales are $240. That, you know, we have a pretty neat QuickBooks system that have random numbers, and our average sale is $240. I can't tell you how many people have come in and told me, they said they couldn't be able, they weren't able to afford jewelry in town before, especially after Marlow and Company left. So, we are an asset to St. Helena. We don't do bridal sets, we don't do hu- ultra-high-end jewelry. What we do is, you know, what we, we do is quality jewelry that's different from everybody else. You know, there's, it's, you cannot find it anywhere, we're not trying to compete with anybody, we're not trying to torpedo anybody's business, we're just finding a niche of void and filling that void. It's a di- different segment being served. Like, our customer is, you know, I just remember like in Christmas, it was a Pacific Union College head coming in looking for earrings for his mom, and he, he didn't want to buy her costume jewelry, but he wanted something quality. We found him, you know, fourteen-carat gold earrings, they were 200 bucks. You know, he's giving his mom a quality gift, and, you know, at a affordable price. He can't find that in town, he would, we would have lost that customer to Napa or Santa Rosa. You know, i- it's that customer that I'm serving. And, or the customer that doesn't really care for ultra-high-end jewelry, that she wants something different, like this piece right here. There is a huge market in town for statement jewelry, to somebody that has, you know, all the diamonds already, that's, wants something different. You know, there is a void that we're filling, and that is my demographic. We're not taking customers from anybody else, we're finding our own customers, and we're filling that void. So, fast forward a few years, you know, we're doing okay at that location. Location's not the best, but we're making it work. If nobody's, if anybody's not familiar with the location, just south of Spring Street, not in the St. Helena Plaza. My lease was coming up, it was coming up for renewal, the renewal option wasn't really working for me, and after trying to find different spaces in town, and staff will, you know, confirm that, you know, trying to find different spaces in town, I couldn't, you know, lock one down, decided we could be closing, you know, at the end of the month, and, end of December, and just, you know, finding new space, looking at different towns, I was looking at Napa, Sonoma, Sociedad. I didn't want to leave St. Helena, I love St. Helena, it was just the numbers, you know, the rent was so high, and he was driving me out of town. One night in December, I was standing outside, it was like eight, nine o'clock, and I'm usually open late, I saw the owner of Vince's Trunk kind of packing up her car, taking all her inventory out, and, you know, kind of just closing up her shop, it was obvious, she was closing. In my excitement, next morning, I went and tried to see what's going on with the space, and Jeff Feeney and I were able to speak to the landlord and, and finalize a deal with that space. So, you know, with, with that, I just, you know, let's just kind of rewind a little. I was leaving town. I skipped the part as far as I was leaving, I decided to put my store closing signs, I know there was a misconception of, were you leaving, you know, or not? I was planning to leave, I put my store closing sign up, and then I found out about Vince's Trunk, and at that point, we're, you know, we were just, we moved up the street. So, there wasn't this, you know, malicious intent to put a store closing sign and then move up the street. We found out about Vince's Trunk at the last minute, it was really, you know, I looked at it, it was a kind of a Christmas miracle for me, because I was trying to find a new space in town forever, and it came up, and I got it, and it's, it's a pretty good space. The first lease we came up with the landlord was, he was going to give me a couple months free, because we were expecting to go through a use permit process, and, you know, he was aware of that, you know, so when I applied for this, a permit for this space, when I approached the city planners, they gave me a similar use permit. So, in my delight, of course, you know, we, we switched up the lease and we took the space right away. So, most of January was spent getting, you know, getting the shop ready, and right before I opened, we heard there was a problem with the permit. The problem being that some people in town thought I should have applied for a new permit instead of getting a, a similar use permit. Right away, within ten minutes of hearing there was an issue, Jeff Feeney and I, we went up and spoke with Aaron, we sat down with Aaron from City Planner, and he said, you know, he wasn't changing his mind, his decision was made, and he doesn't feel like it, it, you know, it, there is a big difference. The next day, we heard there was another issue, that, the conformance issue. Like the city, I was not aware at the time, I was out of conformance with my old permit. It was just something that was, you know, not consciously done, it was just, over time, we just kind of deviated a little, and I, that was brought up, then our conformance issue. So, we went up and spoke to the city planners again. At that point, we decided that I wanted to apply for a, a permit or amend the current permit, this way we can kind of be in compliance. So, here we are, tonight, I'm asking the commission to give us permission to do what we've been doing for the past five years. I wasn't doing anything deceitful or malicious, I was trying to survive, that's all it was. I had an open storefront, there was a beautiful window, everybody knew what I was doing, everybody walked by to go to Dolce for coffee in the morning, there was no, you know, malicious or deceitful intent, it was, it is what it was. So, I'm asking the commission tonight to approve the permit, as far as, I think you had a question regarding what option, you know, I'm hoping that the commission can approve option one, and as far as complying whatever decision, you know, I have full intention to comply whatever decision the, the commission makes. That's basically it. There's no net, you know, I know there's net neutrality, I was looking at that, there's no net increase of jewelry stores in town. Nothing's changing. If, everything was, you know, I would, it's kind of a unique situation, usually a, a use permit application, it's a new entity, it's unknown. I'm known, you know what, you know, people know what I've been doing, I've been here for five years. Nothing's going to change, we're going to have the same type of inventory, actually less, because of space, and we went from 1,200 square feet to 500 square feet, so it's a lot less space, a lot less jewelry. The jewelry carry, you know, it's, it's more, it's for a demographic that's, they're looking for quality jewelry that's more affordable, that's basically it. They don't want costume jewelry, but they want something nice that's, you know, they can afford. Not everybody wants to spend or can thousands of dollars on jewelry, and that's basically, I'm just asking the commission to give me permission to do what I've been doing, and that's basically it.
So, in that, in that vein, I, I will ask you, and then I'll ask my fellow commissioners, do they have questions for the applicant? Are you comfortable with use, the condition number eight, with the limitations?
I, I, you know, with that, I, you know, we spoke to some of the other shops in town, some of them had concerns, most of them don't have any concerns anymore, I, that's why most of them are not here today. I'm fine with saying, hey, I'm not a bridal jewelry guy, we could take bridal jewelry off the, you know, we can put that as far as off the table, but as far as getting specific in metals and stones and stuff like that, I'm not, because my jewelry is so eclectic, we can have a piece of turquoise with, you know, diamond accent around it, that's on sterling silver, or, you know, a piece of fourteen-carat gold that, you know, you know, just regular fourteen-carat gold hoop earrings that, you know, are 200 dollars, you know, that somebody wants, you know, everyday earrings. So, getting specific in metals and stones, this is the first time I've seen that.
So, maybe you're more comfortable with the condition of exempting a bridal jewelry umbrella?
Yeah, that'll fine with me.
Okay, okay, that's good to know. Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant?
Not at this time.
All right, we'll invite you back up after everyone else has had a chance to speak.
Very good.
Like to invite anyone else?
I guess I, I do have a question. So, what if, what if you were selling the things you were selling, and it wasn't going well, and you needed to, you know, make a change to, in order to be profitable? What's your, you know, what would you?
That's why I'm asking not to limit the specific option number eight, it'll be very, you'll be putting me in a corner with option number, you know, eight, the third option for the approval, as far as saying you can only sell this. Jewelry trends change, you know, things change, so you kind of want to carry what obviously sells, you don't want to have something that doesn't move.
So, then if something, you, you might want to start selling something that would be do, if you started to sell something that would be a duplicate of what other jewelry stores in town are doing, would you, how would you handle that?
You know, my whole business model was never to try to compete with anybody in town, for a few reasons. One of them, they have more buying power, they're, they were at a better location, but to me, I always, my, my main business model was to find something different, and that's all it took. Whatever, different from St. Helena and different from your average shopping mall. If you walk into the shop, you see something you like, you're not going to see that up the street or at your local shopping mall, and most likely you're going to buy it then. So, regardless of, if I have an item not selling, I'm not going to go get an item that's down the street, it's, it's going to be something different that, you know, it's not available in town or your local, we don't sell anything that's mass-produced or branded, it's truly unique jewelry that, you know, to be able to survive at that really horrible location for so long, y- you know, you couldn't compete with the shops up the street, there was no way. And I couldn't afford to, I didn't have their buying power or, or their, you know, their, their market share, so it was truly finding that unique item and filling that void, especially after Marlow and Company, which was more, on the more affordable end, she sold gold, diamonds, pearls. Marlow, I don't know if anybody remembers her, Lydia, she was at 1204, which ironically is right next door to me now. She closed in 2011. After she closed, there was a huge market, people that, you know, they say, oh, I wish, you know, Lydia was still open, that, you know, we can go there and get two, three-hundred-dollar gold earrings, you know, which I, I, and I guess wasn't found in, anywhere else in town, so.
I have another question.
Yeah.
What, what is the connection between your website and what you would be selling in your store?
I'm sorry?
What's the connection between what you have on your website and what you would be selling in your store? Is there a connection? Because I know your website has art as well as jewelry, so I'm curious.
I don't, I don't think we have art on our website, there's a lot of things on our website that are not sold in the store, but as far as art, most of that art, you know, it's like blown glass, like this piece of blown glass is, it's from a, a glass floor out of Benicia, you know, this necklace is made in San Francisco. But as far as art, I don't know if you categorize this as jewelry or art, you know, it really depends on, you know, what you see that as. I don't know if that answers your question or not. Good.
What are the price points of the items you've brought in? Not on the desk here and on the Diaz, but the necklace and the piece there?
This piece right here is about $800. The neck- The necklace.
Can you repeat that? I couldn't hear you.
This piece of glass ranges eight hundred dollars. This glassblower is actually, his name is Michael Neuro. He's very well-known in, in the Bay Area for his amazing glassblowing. This specific, what was that?
I know, ma-, it's making me nervous in the chair.
I know. It's uh, it's, it's, they're actually pretty strong, believe it or not. Um, this specific artist, her name is Masha. She's out of San Francisco. She's very well-known. She's for her obviously statement necklaces. Her price points are generally between eight hundred dollars to four thousand dollars. I would say she's probably my higher price point item. And obviously, you're not selling a piece like that every day.
But you do have customers that are able to purchase items upwards of a thousand dollars and coming into your store today.
But my average sale, just to be clear, is two hundred and forty dollars. And that's, we can prove.
Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant at this time? All right, we'll invite you back up. Thank you.
Cool.
Wouldn't anyone else like to speak at the public hearing?
Hi, I'm Stephen Hill. I'm speaking for Adley Rashid, um, who can't make it tonight because of a, a family illness, but um, so I'm just gonna read a letter he wrote. My name is Adley Rashid. I'm the owner of Cocopelli Gallery, a Native American store here in St. Helena. In two thousand and seven, we applied for a use permit for a Native American and contemporary jewelry store. We had to go through the process. It took a while. We got approved and we opened for business. And that, at that time, we had two other locations. One was in Hillsburg and one was in Calistoga. They were both Native American and contemporary affordable jewelry stores. Our store in Hillsburg only survived one year. When we opened, we were the only Native American store in town. Within three months, another Native American store opened. We both tried to survive. It was too small of a town to support two stores selling similar Native American jewelry. And we both went out of business. In Calistoga, there was one Native American store that was there for years. When we came in, opened another store, within a year, there were three Native American stores, all in Calistoga. Too small of a town to support three Native American contemporary jewelry stores and we all went out of business. So you can see the trend. In two thousand and ten, when we closed our store in Hillsburg, we had a different mix of merchandise. We had some gold with precious stones. We brought that to our store in St. Helena. Shortly after that, I received a letter from the city informing me I was out of compliance with my use permit and I am not allowed to sell any gold jewelry. So I complied and took all the gold out and continued doing business in Native American and uh, contemporary jewelry. Mr. Dal-, in two thousand and twelve, Mr. Dahlia came in, applied for a Native American jewelry store with pottery and artifacts. I wasn't aware, but he was given a use permit. He opened his store in January of two thousand and twelve. Within six months, Mr. Dahlia realized he could not survive selling Native American jewelry and artifacts in the city of St. Helena. So he shifted gears and started selling fine jewelry and different products. Apparently, still in that location, he wasn't doing so where, so well. So now he's looking for different locations, thinking a different location will make a better business. As a store owner, I have two concerns. The permit in the old store Mr. Dahlia had was for Native American jewelry. That store is up for lease and that permit is open for yet another Native American jewelry store to come in. And number two, restricting the type of jewelry that Mr. Dahlia can sell and narrow it down to Native Americans. If that's what's gonna happen, there's only Zuni, Hopi and Navajo, which are all similar. Then you have artifacts, bows, arrows, skulls. Again, those are all similar. So now we have two stores across the street from each other with the same merchandise. Keep in mind that Mr. Dahlia could not make it with this type of merchandise in his previous location and moving a few doors up is not really gonna solve his situation. However, if we're going to be modifying permits, we would like to have our permit modified to be able to sell other types of jewelry too. So I see that you have a very tough decision to make. But the city should and needs to always play a fair game with everyone and be consistent in their decision-making. Because solving one situation can create another situation for someone else. Thank you.
At the end, yes. I just, there's a kind of a race right now. I'm like, which one's gonna make it?
Hi, uh, my name is Pat Dell. Uh, you know, I worked in a fine jewelry store here in town for about four years. So unfortunately didn't make it. I thought it was one of the best jewelry stores in town. But there's a definition of fine jewelry. I don't know what it is. But I know that even though we were a fine jewelry store, we did sell some fourteen karat gold. Very often that fourteen karat gold had gemstones in it. So if somebody could Google fine jewelry sitting here and find out what the definition of that is. We've just heard a good definition of Native, Native American jewelry. And perhaps in a small town like this, you have to have the gentleman who's applying here today sell a kind of jewelry that's not fine jewelry and not Native American in order to be fair to everyone here.
Thank you.
My name is Ibrahim Agirman. I'm the owner of Ottoman Art, eleven fifty two Main Street. I moved to St. Helena, eh, two thousand and ten, actually, two thousand and eleven, January, and Sam Dahlia and I moved same time. When I moved to this country, this country as well, this city, I came overseas. I had confidence to do business. I had power. I had experience. But when I met Sam Dahlia, this is where I met him, is we have really low-class location. Sam Dahlia is started very hard. He tried a lot. He tried all he could so he can survive. I was directioning him. I was telling him, you can do this, that, this. We all worked on how he could survive. Anyway, just last December, I was in Turkey for a buying trip. Sam Dahlia called me. He said he find a store right up the street, which is only ninety feet. I was so happy for him. Suddenly, I hear things that against him or suddenly, let's say, he does things that jewelries that he carries is that everybody carry or that other people has it. But at the same time, we have to see this guy has been tried, has been trying, has been, has a family to go for it and jewelry he sells is not as, as a business owner, I don't see him, that he'll be competing anybody else in here. Because the amount of jewelry he sells, the percentages of jewelry he sells is right fit where he's going to be. And I'd like to thank, say thank you and I think I hope he's gonna get his permits. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at the public hearing?
Bobby Clark, Main Street. Um, I hadn't planned to speak tonight, so this is gonna be a little dicey because I don't like to speak in public, but this isn't about competition. This is about the general plan and this is about the permit process. Mr. Dahlia, when he first opened his store, was well aware of the limitations of his permit and what he was allowed to carry. Whether you think that's right or wrong, that, that was his permit. And he chose actively, when his current merchandise didn't work, to morph that into something else. Well, okay, everybody's, you know, you want to make a living. I don't have any problem with that. But you have to either apply the general plan or not apply it. And if you're not going to apply it to the business use permits, then you can't apply it to wineries and you can't apply it to land. You cannot be preferential with which part of it you, you choose to, to enforce. Um, there's also a fear if you say, okay, you know, what he's, what he has now is different. It is unique. So let's just let him have that. Great. Well, time has shown that it could morph. And let's say he sticks to it. He doesn't do well, but he's not gonna morph this one. But he sells his business. The person who comes in has an unlimited permit. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, first of all, I just wanted to say to Victor and Aaron, uh, two hardest guys, hardest working guys in town, thanks for your help on this because I know it hasn't been easy for everybody or anybody. And to the planning commissioners, thank you very much for all of you taking time to meet with Sam and myself to walk through the process and, and where we're at here. And uh, Bobby Clark has a point. This is about a process. And when we found out that Sam's uh, current situation needed to follow a different process, we immediately went in and asked for guidance and help from these two gentlemen to my right. Uh, they were kind enough to help us understand what we needed to do and we've done that and that's why we're here. Uh, clearly, uh, Sam Dahlia uh, strayed from his uh, former use permit and admittedly so. Uh, and he has as much told all of you the same thing and operated a, a store on Main Street in St. Helena open to the public with a window demonstrating what it was he was selling. He wasn't trying to hide anything. He was trying to survive. Luckily, Sam found a new space and we have a chance to keep him here in St. Helena. What Sam has been selling to be successful is different from his former use permit. It's different from the current use permit on the space and that's why we're here tonight. If you want to take bridal sets and say we have too many stores in town that sell those things, great. But you can't take away everything from him and not give him the chance to survive. He's an asset to St. Helena. He provides an option that isn't readily available anywhere else as to the diversification of Main Street and allows people to stroll up and down our streets and go into shops and find things they won't find anywhere else. And that's what we've been clamoring for. We have it. Please help him stay and approve this use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at the public hearing? Seeing none, I'd like to invite the applicant back up for rebuttal.
Um, my only rebuttal is um, in reference to uh, Cocopelli's statement, the letter that the employee read. Um, I saw that twenty ten letter that the city sent to uh, the owners of Cocopelli. It had nothing to do with gold, just to clarify. Um, it had something to do with carrying branded jewelry and watches, mass-produced. Like the term, the language was mass-produced and branded. Had nothing to do with specific metals. Um, they since that twenty ten letter have never um, changed their business model. They have, you know, which I'm not here to just tell them they're not in conformance. I mean, obviously, I can't tell anybody not, you know, it's, you know, they're not in conformance when I wasn't, but the reality is that they're not in conformance as of today. They're, they're carrying watches and branded and mass-produced items. Um, they want to ask for a permit to carry so they, they're, they're free to do that. But um, you know, for them to, to, to kind of sit here and stand here and say, but the history of going out of business when um, they opened up Hillsburg and Calistoga, we've both been here for the last five years. Neither one of us has closed and gone, gone out of business. So that's just uh, you know, the reality of the situation. Nothing's changing. You know, yeah, things, uh, inventory's changed. Their inventory's changed. My inventory's changed. But um, it's just like the pot's calling kettle black. It, it's, it's no different than what I'm doing. Um, as far as uh, specific Native American, when you say Native American jewelry, is this um, assumption that Native American jewelry is just beaded necklaces or just sil- silver necklace? Native American jewelry consists of a lot of different mediums. Gold, there's a lot of artists that, you know, I carry. I think they're actually on your desks that work with fourteen karat gold, work with semi-precious stones and precious stones. So the conception, the perception of Native American jewelry just being turquoise or coral is uh, not valid and, you know, you're more than welcome to do your research. There's plenty of Native American jewelry set on precious metals with precious stones. So um, you know, I just wanted to clarify that. I don't know if the, the commission was aware of that at all. That's basically my only rebuttal.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would anyone else like to speak at public hearing? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and invite Commissioner deliberation and staff questions. I have a question for staff. Um, a lot of this boils down to compliance with permits and we at this point, I don't believe have on staff anyone that does code enforcement. Um, do you see that likely to change anytime soon?
Hard to say based on budgets. I mean, the bottom line is we don't have staff to go and pull everybody's use permit in town and go measure floor area or display window cases, you know, saying, oh, you're thirty-seven percent when you're only permitted thirty-five. We just, we don't have the resources to do that at this time.
Do you know if the complaint, I mean, if the situation talked about in the letter that was read, that the city came and, and told them not to be selling what they were selling, do you know if that was complaint driven or?
The one at Cocopelli?
Yeah.
I have no, no idea.
Okay.
Commissioner Hill, Commissioner Kister?
Well, I guess I have a tru-, uh, trouble with this and uh, and I have trouble with the three uh, things. I, I, I believe that there's a use permit already for that space um, that runs with the land and I think that if we're gonna change it, that he needs to re-, uh, apply for a new permit. That's my opinion.
That, that's what he's, that's what he's done. That's what we're doing.
I thought we were modifying it.
That's what we're doing.
Not an amendment?
It is an amendment. We're amending the, the use permit that's there now.
So the amendment would, would say this eighty percent?
It, whatever you guys decide.
The old thing wouldn't be there.
One of these three options would replace what exists, but the use permit then is amended.
And that's what will travel with the?
Well, I have a concern. I definitely would like to put some sort of a limit on it because of that very fact of that it does run with the land. I had written it and then Bobby Clark brought it up, you know, the, that there's not a competition now, but that doesn't preclude it from in the future. And I do think that there is certain level of saturation with that ultra-fine jewelry stores that we have in St. Helena. I'm not, I'm not saying that, you know. I understand that business morph, but I don't think that Mr. Dahlia's jewelry store really is a direct competition with that. But I definitely think that if, if you, there's some sort of limit on it, you know, because someone else could go in with eighty percent jewelry, just it's, it's a free-for-all.
That's what I'm, I mean, I think that being in business is difficult. And I'm, I'm, you know, I just am in awe of people who do that successfully. And I know there are a lot of pressures, but I think that um, and everyone wants to have freedom, total freedom to do what they need to do. But, you know, you either have freedom or you have fairness and justice. And it's, it's a trade-off and that's difficult. Um, it's so to me, it seems, it seems that if other permits have restrictions on them, then if we, then they all, they either all should have restrictions or none should have restrictions because it seems, that seems just like disparate treatment. I don't know what precipitated the uh, change with the Copa, what was it? I can never pronounce that right. You know, when they had to change, but maybe it was a complaint. I assume it was not a city inspection. I don't think we had any inspectors going out at that time. But um, also, there's a history here of more, you know, changing, morphing when the need comes. So I can understand the, if there's some lack of trust from some of the other businesses in town that even though there's a, an agreement to go along with this, maybe, you know, with whatever the permit said, that maybe, you know, maybe that wouldn't happen. Um, so I'm, I'm thinking, yeah, I'm just really conflicted. It seems to me that there should be some restrictions.
And I don't think they should, and I don't think they should be just super tight restrictions because we ran, we will run into problems with them. The future will run into a problem with it being.
Except that businesses have already had to stop.
Uh, our general plan specifies, I mean, we, if we don't have, we have to hold our businesses accountable to follow the use permits. There isn't, it's not, it can't be free-for-all and it can't be loose. I'm just saying a free-for-all in like, and under the jewelry condition of it, if it's just jewelry, it could be anything. I'm asking for a condition of a specific type of jewelry to be excluded. Ie. the ultra-fine bridal jewelry, which Mr. Dahlia doesn't seem to have a problem with. You know, that doesn't preclude.
He didn't, but the next owner might have.
But the ex, but you know what? That's he, that's the use permit that runs with the land. And when he, if he sells the business, that's the use permit that he has. And then he, I would like the condition to be like, it's not the planning director. It's, it needs to go to a public hearing if it's gonna change the use permit.
Well, I did look up fine jewelry online and I could not find anything that, that would make it easy to um, you know, to make these decisions. Um, it seems to me, I, I don't, it seems to me there's a bigger problem here and that is fairness and disparate treatment. And um, my sense would be, I would, you know, even if it's harder to do, it would seem to me that since you've had some pushback, that it might be a good idea to um, go with, with um, choice number three and have some restrictions so that, you know, as, as um, Commissioner Seany was saying, that the, you know, that, that you should have been going along with the permit and, you know, you weren't before, but now it's a new deal. So you will, if you want to change it, you can come and ask for an amendment. If, I mean, it's not like it has to be written in stone, but that's the process, I think, that um, um, Bobby was talking about, the other Bobby. Um, that the pro-, it's a process here. It's not, it's not about you. It's about the process that's not being followed or being followed. And it's not about not wanting you to succeed because that's, you know, that's not about, that's not what it's about, at least in my mind. So I do see this as a process problem and so I would be willing to. So I do see this as a process problem, and so I would be willing to work on choice number three with some restrictions that would, and I was thinking, maybe you should go back into the community and work with the other jewelry stores there to see what would be acceptable to everyone, and then come back with that. I have no idea if you're, if you're
Oh, if you could come up and speak into the microphone so that people at home can?
I approached most of the jewelry shops in town. That's why most of them are not here. The Marcus and Wayne, they own Palladium, Patina, and Pennyweight. They don't have any problem. They think it's a free market. You know, they have no right to, they're using their words, they have no right to tell me what to sell. It's, you know, and I, it's, it is. As far as, I told them I was never interested in bridal jewelry. They said, you know, whether you carry or don't.
But those details are not what I'm talking about, and I understand they're not interested in process.
So what was your question?
They are interested in process.
No, I think that they actually, the reason that they might not be here is because they wanted him to do the use permit process that I feel is, was the biggest issue.
Biggest issues just come in front of the commission.
Okay. But again, I don't want to speculate because they're not here, and that's hearsay, but still, I just, it's the procedure. He's here, he's in, he's asking for a use permit amendment, and I think that that's ultimately what people wanted us to do is to follow the process that's in place. I'm just also thinking a little ahead of the game of the process for the next tenant, because the use permits run with the land, to make this, to be what the future tenant, sorry, but, you know, you have to think far ahead, is not in direct competition with the ultra-fine bridal jewelry stores that we already have in existence.
As per condition six, they necessarily wouldn't be, you know.
What do you mean, condition six?
Condition six runs with the use permit, which runs with the land, excuse me, you know.
Eight?
Eight.
Yeah, I know, I know, and I understand that, but I'm saying that I think that condition eight right now is really limiting, and I don't like it. I'd rather it be a little bit less limiting, because it really reminds me of the handwritten use permit that we had before. No, no, I'm not done. So I really, I just want sort of, rather than this is allowed, I'd rather have this is not allowed. And I think that just to protect the fine jewelry establishments that we already have in existence. And that's, I think that the direction that we should kind of go in, because it is an established business, it's not a use, a new business. I think that that needs to be brought up. It's not some, we're not something in the dark. We know what kind of jewelry he sells. He's been selling it for five years.
Okay, well, let me just say this. When we're dealing with people who are, you know, building buildings and on established property, they already own them, we encourage them to talk to the neighbors and to come up with plans that will be amenable to everyone. That's kind of the direction I was thinking of going here, is to invite Mr. Dahlia to speak to the neighbors who are, who are in opposition and try to work with them to come up with a number three that would be, with restraints that would be acceptable to them and acceptable to him. Or to, or to come as close to that as they could and bring that back. I don't, I can't, I don't, I don't know enough to be able to set what constraints should be there and what shouldn't be. But I think it would be important for him to talk with his neighbors and come up with something that made sense to everyone.
Commissioner Bobby?
I mean, I think that's a valid point, but we also do have a lot of correspondence from those said neighbors.
Said neighbors are competitors too. I mean, they have obviously an vested interest of not getting a permit.
And I'd rather not see a situation that's just spinning the wheels with going back and forth and just prolonging.
We have one of those neighbors here who I think has expressed, what I heard to say was past precedent being set of not staying with an use permit regardless of what we
Let's create a usable use permit that's appropriate.
So let me finish. So I think that was one thing we need to address as a committee, specifically addressing the Clark's issue. I think also coming back a little bit to Mr. Dahlia's comment, that the need in a business to be able to modify inventory, which I agree with, I think that's an important thing. However, in St. Helena, that's not how we've defined our use permits. So we have to work within what is our law of the land here, and this is in other cities. So unfortunately, you don't have the ability to kind of try things out and move things around. That's, that's not how it works here. Unfortunately, I wish it was, because I think it'd make all of our businesses
Good if he asked for a permit amendment.
If it's a broad enough use permit, he could have wiggle room. We could, we could build in with a limitation. We could build. If we do number eight as it is now, that's incredibly limiting, and that doesn't allow for any wiggle room. That's why I'm saying I'm not comfortable with it as written right now. But I'm saying that if we do, rather than this is allowed, we do what this is not allowed, that, that allows, sorry, I'm going to keep using that word, it enables an ability to have some wiggle room that you seem to be comfortable with. I don't see you
I'm totally fine with it. What I mean by changing things up, it's more trends, you know. For example, one season you have rose gold that's, that's, you know, in and selling well versus, you know, then you have sterling silver with turquoise. It's not as far as a specific, getting out to specific metals or stones. It's, you know, it's just more of a broad thing. As far as limiting bridal jewelry, I'm fine with that. But when you start kind of nitpicking as far as metals and stones, that's, that's kind of, you know, putting you in a little corner there.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to weigh in here now. I would deny the proposal as proposed, and I would, I would like them all to work with and bring it back and, and work with staff as, as to better wording than this.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with the wording as it is right now for condition eight.
Right now, I would deny the proposal as, as proposed.
That'd be a denial or a continuance?
Well, a continuance if you want, but I can't vote for it as a stance.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to be here for a while if we're editing the condition eight.
Yeah. Let me just weigh in quickly from a staff standpoint. Obviously, this, this is kind of a, both a difficult issue, slippery slope. I think just in hearing folks' comments and seeing that we're a ways from a resolution, I would definitely think a continuance is the way to go. We have, we also have the housing element item coming up, and I think as indicated, you know, if we end up wordsmithing here, it's going to be, we're going to be at it a while, and then what I keep coming back to is what staff can actually enforce. So maybe what would be perhaps, one way to go would be for the commission to indicate simply the kind of approach you would prefer to see, and then we'll sit down with various parties and see what we can come up with. I've heard Chair Parker indicated that the condition eight is, is too limiting, maybe somewhat in the right direction, but too limiting. I guess I'd just like to hear everyone's thoughts on that.
I'm just concerned with, you know, he could have a turquoise piece that has small diamonds surrounded by it, but if he can't have diamonds, then he's violating his use permit, even though it's not really rising to that, for me, that level of fine jewelry.
But once again, we're looking at the issue of enforcement, then we get into quantity, and it kind of is, I mean, as Sam indicated, his average sale is $240.
Exactly.
I don't think that most of these precious metals would be in the $240 items. But, but I think it's something, it's, it's unique enough and unusual enough that we need to kind of go back to the drawing board. I'm kind of hearing that both from the applicant, we were trying to talk with him earlier, weren't able to, and from the commission, that what we have currently doesn't work. So we could look at coming, trying to slice this a couple other ways and see what we can come up with, and just getting more feedback. But I think we're looking at continuing this.
You know, just so, we, we sat down with the city planners twice, very specifically. This option eight came up as a surprise to me. We never, they never asked me, they never told me. They literally sat down with the opposition and catered to their, what they wanted, which is fine. But, you know, just to make things clear, we approached city planners twice. We sat down. They guided us towards, and Jeff can, you know, kind of explain this better than I have, than me. They got us towards the type of application to apply for, and it was strictly percentages. And it was Sam applied for 80% or, you know, for this, or 20% for this, and metals, stones were never brought up in that, in those meetings. And I, I see, you know, where you're coming from, but let's just take a step back, and we're going to go out and waste some more time. I haven't been open for two months, trying to figure out what everybody wants, you know. Option eight, option three, with, with no bridal jewelry, I think it's more than fair. That's what I've been doing anyways the last five years.
I just don't think the other commissioners right now, I think that we need staff to feel comfortable with what they recommend, and I don't, I'm kind of getting the impression that they're not, that they'd like to go back to the drawing board and maybe just kind of hash it out again. And if we could, Victor, can we continue just to the next meeting? Is that?
Yeah, we definitely could, and see if there's another way at this, coming up with some approach. So we could look at a continuance of two weeks.
Would you be willing to speak with other jewelers, I mean, intercompany people?
Sure, sure.
I, one, if I, yeah, I have something to add. I haven't said anything yet. With regards to this, I almost, I almost think, you know, you know, we're staring at continuance in the face, and I think we're finding issues with both percentages and, and product type. And what I think resonated to me the most, and what would make me comfortable making the findings we would need for the use permit, was what you started with, which is that you're, you're offering a product, whether it's, you know, wherever it's from, but you're offering a product that is underrepresented, and then therefore there's some sort of diversification that's being satisfied, because it's differentiated from the other stores that are in your, you know, band or in your, in your genre. And I, in disclosure, met with the applicant and his representative, and I met with Mr. Clark and Mr., well, Carlo and Kiki. And, and, and what I, what resonated with me, I think, as a St. Alenan, and I think as our citizens might attest, is that, you know, if we get in the intricacies of regulating commerce to the nth degree, I mean, we're, we're winding up with these use permits that are unenforceable, and they're like a back of a napkin, you know, a turducken or whatever, you know, unenforceable kind of thing that the applicant doesn't like, the neighbors don't like, it's not enforced, everybody's upset. So one thing Mr. Clark mentioned to me that I think would be worth staff looking into is this idea of defining, because we couldn't come up with it on the fly tonight, what fine jewelry is, and differentiating that from what we're talking about here, and then differentiating that from what we consider costume or accessory jewelry. And maybe that's a way for us to get at, you know, allowing for this use to exist, these other uses to exist above it, and, you know, uses that exist in our retail spaces with accessory, you know, costume and whatever. That, that would just be my, my two cents. That's, that's kind of where I stand today. I'm in favor of a continuance. These patient people have waited to attack 120-page document, and, and I really don't think we're going to come to a resolution. I think that people are going to be upset regardless of what we decide tonight, and that's just the curse of doing business in St. Helena, as terrible as it sounds.
I would, I would like to add one thing, though, that, that you do look at the process, and if it's decided that it's too much trouble to micromanage, we can't enforce any of these, any of these rules anyway, then we need to be fair about not requiring some people to do it and other people not to. So I just, I really think that's important here.
Absolutely. Uniform enforceability is, to the extent possible.
All right. Do we have a motion to continue?
So moved.
Well, I, I can't move it. Do we have a motion? Are you, are you, sorry, you move, sorry.
I said, yes, so moved.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Kistner?
Yes.
Hile?
Yes.
Sweeney?
Yes.
Chairperson, Parker?
Yes.
And just to clarify, to a date certain, so we'd be looking at the March
Yes, please.
The March 3 meeting, which should be the next?
Yes, please.
Next one.
All right. Thank you for everyone who came to attend to that item. Moving on to item number 10, this is the housing element study session. We're going to wait for the jewelry to be picked up? And I believe that we have a PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah, let's, let me just make a few quick, quick comments. You know, this is a study session item. We're looking at getting comments from the commission that we can forward to council. Council's going to be doing the similar exercise at the meeting next week. As indicated in the staff report, this item's going to come back for formal action to the commission in May and to council later in May. As also indicated in the previous or earlier discussion item concerning the hotel, we do have a May 31 deadline. So what I'd like to do is turn the presentation over to Christine O'Rourke, who is our housing element expert, who's here to walk us through what, what we'll be looking at today.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Victor, and good evening, commissioners. So yes, we have a little presentation, so I'll get started on that right away. So while housing is primarily a local issue, the availability and affordability of housing is of statewide concern. Here in Napa County and across the Bay Area, the price of housing is really beyond the, what many people can afford to pay. And that really has some serious implications for our communities, for our local economies, and for our quality of life. So the lack of affordable housing means that it's more difficult for employers to recruit and retain employees. It leads to increased traffic and greenhouse gas emissions, as workers have to travel longer distances in order to find communities in which they can afford to live. And often, it also means that young families and longtime residents have to relocate out of their hometown in order to find affordable housing. So the housing element, the linchpin to a housing element is the Regional Housing Needs Allocation Process, or the RENA process. And RENA ensures that local governments provide sufficient appropriately-zoned land for new housing to address population growth and job generation. It's important to recognize that the city itself is not required to build or finance housing. The city is just required to identify land that's available and appropriately-zoned for housing. The RENA process starts at the state level with the Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. So at the beginning of each housing element cycle, HCD determines the regional need, and there are over 20 regions in California. And then by state law, hands that number over to the local council of governments. In our case, it's the Association of Bay Area Governments, or ABAG for short. So for this housing element cycle, which is the fifth housing element cycle, HCD determined that the Bay Area had to accommodate and project, plan for about 188,000 units for the five-year plan, or the eight-year planning period, which is, goes from 2015 to 2023. And that number is actually lower than what it was for the previous housing element cycle. It was about 215,000 previously. So they gave that number to ABAG, and then ABAG allocates it to the 100 cities and towns in the Bay Area and the nine counties. And so of the 188,000, about 1,500 was allocated to Napa County. That's only about, it's actually less than 1% of the total units. Considering that Napa County is one of nine counties, it really got off actually very easy with this allocation. Of that, St. Helena was allocated 31 units. So the RENA, as I said, we're now in our fifth housing element cycle. RENA's been a required part of housing elements since 1980. And here's a look at what the RENA requirement for St. Helena's been over those five housing element cycles. It started at 786 units for the first cycle, and the last housing element cycle was 121, and now we're at 31, which is about 25% of the last housing element cycle. The RENA is then broken down into income categories. And so I'm comparing here the last housing element cycle in green and the current housing element cycle in blue. The allocation is broken down for very low, low, moderate, and above moderate households. And what we're looking at is what's affordable to these income levels. So by affordable, we mean that the rent and the utilities, in the case of a rental property, and the mortgage payment, the insurance, the taxes, and in the case of an ownership property, is no more than 30% of the gross household income for that household that occupies the unit. So now we need fa eight units for very low, five for low, five for moderate, and 13 for above moderate. And the income categories themselves are identified around a median income. And that median income is different for different counties. It changes from year to year. It changes according to the household size. It even changes according to the income schedule that you're looking at. So this example here is for a four-person household. In Napa County, it was for 2014, and the median income was $86,100 for four-person household. So very low is defined as up to 50% of the median, or in this case, it's up to $43,000. Low income is 50 to 80% of the median, or somewhere between 43 and 66,000. Moderate income is 80 to 120% of the median, or between 66 and 103,000. And then above moderate is anything over 120% median. It's important to realize that when we talk about very low or low income, we're not talking about an absolute threshold like a poverty level. It is defined around that median income. So the median can be fairly high, at 66,000 for a low-income household. So this process began in July of 2013, when for a low-income household. So this process began in July of 2013 when ABAG actually adopted the RENA plan and the city was handed its RENA number for this housing element cycle. Last April, we had a community workshop and at that time we presented the draft Housing Needs Assessment, which shows a lot of the background information. We also talked about the housing sites that were identified in the last housing element, which was adopted in 2009. And we taught, discussed housing strategies and just concerns about affordable housing in general. Then in last January, the city adopted some housing ordinances that were needed in order to qualify for the streamlining process, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. But these, we, um, we call them prerequisites. These were related to emergency shelters, transitional and supportive housing, and reasonable accommodations for disabled people. So those needed to be done by January 31st and the city did accomplish that, so we met our first deadline. Tonight, as Victor mentioned, we're bringing the draft to the Planning Commission. We're seeking public input and, um, any feedback from the commissioners as well as a recommendation to bring the draft to the city council. We have that scheduled for next week on the 24th. And then hopefully the city council will approve the draft to be sent off to HCD at that time. HCD has a mandatory 60 days to review the housing element. During that time period, they'll contact staff and we will probably answer some questions that they have. They might find some things that they feel are out of compliance. Typically, we'll make some adjustments, some, we'll propose some revisions and work it out with HCD staff so that they can, at the end of that 60 days, issue a letter that says, if you make these revisions, we will be able to find the housing element in compliance with state law. So then what we would do is bring the, the draft housing element with those revisions as recommended or required by HCD back to the Planning Commission. We have that tentatively scheduled for May 5th. And then, um, following a recommendation for adoption to the town, the city council, we would bring the draft to the city council. That's tentatively scheduled for May 26. And, um, hopefully the city council would adopt the housing element on that day. Now, the deadline is May 31st to adopt the housing element. That's, um, in order to avoid any penalties for housing, for the housing element. So if the city fails to adopt a housing element by May 31st, it would have to be placed on a four-year cycle as opposed to the eight-year cycle, which the city now qualifies for. So the city would have to do another housing element update in 2019 and then another one in 2023, meet both of those deadlines before being able to go back on an eight-year schedule. There's also some other penalties associated with not making that May 31st deadline. There are state, there are grants that are contingent upon having an adopted and certified housing element. There's transportation grants, One Bay Area grants. There's also affordable housing grants that require the city to have a certified housing element, so the city would miss out on that. Um, and then again, uh, local governments that don't have a certified housing element are, uh, vulnerable to potential lawsuits as well. So the streamline review process is a new process that HCD is making available this housing element cycle. And it's designed to create a more transparent and efficient process. It requires a few things. It requires a certified element, which H, which St. Helena does have, also compliance with certain state laws, which we've already talked about. And for the streamline review, HCD recommends that the local government start with the existing housing element. So in this case, we're starting with the housing element, the 2009 housing element. And then we're indicating the changes that we're making to that base document in strike-through and underline format. So we're just indicating what we are deleting and the new text that we're adding. And then also sometimes we're using highlighting. So we're highlighting the heading of a table or the heading of a new section when everything else that follows in that section is new. So the theory behind streamline review is that HCD is only going to review the things that have been changed. They're going to accept whatever was previously found to be in compliance, including housing element and opportunity sites. So that should make the process go a lot faster. And I've been through two of these streamline reviews now with the state and it really has been a much more efficient process this time around. So it is a good thing to utilize the streamline review process if you can. The state, the housing element is subject to very detailed and comprehensive, um, state laws. And these are just some of the requirements in a housing element. We have to have an evaluation of the current housing element and that's in the, there's, I should mention, there are two sections to your housing element. There's a Housing Needs Assessment, which has most of the background information, including this evaluation of the current housing element. And then there's a separate document called your, um, uh, Goals, Policies, and Programs document. So the other things we need to do is a detailed, uh, anal, an analysis of demographics and housing needs. We have to evaluate constraints on housing development. So we're looking at things like non-governmental constraints, which are the price of land, the cost of construction, the availability of financing, also governmental constraints. Those are things like the fees that the city and special districts charge for new development, permits that are required, time it takes to process those permits. We also have to do a very detailed site inventory. This is a parcel-by-parcel specific, a listing of all of the sites that are available and appropriately zoned to meet RENA. And we are required, of course, um, to get input from the community and incorporate that input into the housing element. And then finally, we have to have programs that promote housing opportunities and address the affordable housing needs, including the, um, the RENA. So as I mentioned earlier, we had a community workshop on April 29th of last year and, um, we had a very spirited discussion that, that evening. We heard from, um, from the public that, very clearly, that there is a need for more housing for local employees, for farmworkers, for seniors, for young families. There was also, um, I'd say predominant, uh, uh, attitude, I guess, that they, uh, there was a preference for small infill development on scattered sites rather than large projects. We also talked about second units and the second unit survey that had just been done. There was, um, kind of conflicting, uh, opinions about whether we should count or don't count the second units and what affordability levels we should be counting those second units at. We had some, uh, discussion about financing for affordable housing. There were some ideas about having a, a real estate transfer tax and also seeking contributions from the wine and hospitality sectors to help afford, to, um, help finance affordable housing. And then we also talked about viability of identified sites. These are sites that were in the previous housing element. So, um, discussion about whether they should be included or not, discussion about road extensions, developer interest in, in actually developing the properties, also some environmental issues. So we took all of this feedback and we did make revisions to the draft. That's before you this evening based on that, on that discussion. So I would just wanted to, uh, kind of quickly go through some of the key changes that we've made to the housing element. First of all, in the background information, most of the, most of this has been, is just updated data. So data on population, employment trends and projections, household and housing stock characteristics, housing costs and affordability, special needs populations, which are seniors, the disabled, farmworkers, um, and those types of populations, the homeless. Then for the housing constraints, constraints section of the housing element here, we really just gave updated information about many of the, the actions that the city has taken to address the housing constraints that were previously identified in the last housing element. So this is, um, encompasses the ordinances that enacted reasonable accommodation procedures for the disabled, emergency shelters, which are in your service, now a zone for your service commercial and industrial zoning districts, transitional and supportive housing in all districts that allow residential uses, farmworker housing, single occupancy housing definition and, and, um, use where that's allowed. And then also the city did codify a water and sewer priority service for affordable housing. So we also made some key changes to the site inventory, again, based on the feedback that we got from the community workshop. Um, primarily though, we've just updated the site information and we carried over most of the housing sites that were in the 2009 element. We did move the Hunter property and the Library Adams site over to other sites. The Hunter property is still kind of in limbo with the EIR, so we felt, the staff felt that that was more appropriate to put it in other sites. Other sites, we have, there's two inventories. There is one that is the kind of key housing opportunity sites. And then the other sites are just other vacant and underutilized sites. Doesn't mean that those sites are not available for, or cannot be developed with housing. It just means that the staff has decided that there might be some constraints that, so they might not be available. Um, so they get kind of put over to that, uh, to that inventory. So the Library Adams site was also moved to other sites. That really is because the, the, um, city was unable to, to kind of reach a consensus about what to do with that site in the last housing element period. So that was moved over. We also moved a site at 821 Pope Street from the other site to the key housing sites listing. And that's because, um, last, I think it was about May, it was after the housing element workshop, the property owner of that site brought forward, uh, just really conceptual drawings to the planning department. And he was thinking about development, developing the site with 19 units of affordable housing for seniors. So because he had expressed interest in that site, we did think, and it's a high-density site, that it was appropriate to move that over to the key housing sites. And then finally, we also added 1105 Pope Street to the key, um, housing sites. That's the site that's owned by California, Calistoga Affordable Housing. And, and, uh, we had talked about that at the, at the, at the community workshop. So this is, um, the first graph that I have that shows how we're going to, um, address the RENA requirement in the housing element. And the RENA that is, the requirement is for this cycle is at the top line. I don't have my pointer, doesn't work on this screen, so I'm going to have to walk you through it. The second line is the single-family homes that are currently under development in the, in the Magnolia Oaks development. They're doing phase two and phase three, so there are 20 single-family homes that are under construction. The way this works is that any units that are under construction as of January 1st of 2014 are counted towards this housing element period. So we're counting the single-family homes there. There's also five, uh, single-family homes on scattered sites throughout the, um, throughout the city. There are four second units at Magnolia. These are the deed-restricted, um, units for very low income that are under, currently under construction. And then since January 1st of 2014, there are another six second units that have been approved. So these are either approved or under construction or perhaps have even been built. And those we've, um, allocated to affordability levels based on the second unit survey that had been conducted last year. And then finally, there's the Calistoga Affordable Housing Project, 1105 Pope Street. That was approved in 2013. There were eight units approved for that project. The, um, a condition of the approval was that 60% of those units were going to be affordable to lower-income households. At the time, the developer did say that they were very interested in developing those units at the deepest affordability levels that were possible. But here, we're being really conservative and we're just allocating them all to the low-income category. And, um, and then moderate for the, for the other remaining 40% of those units. So when we just, when we look at what's under construction or has been approved, we have four very low units that are left and we've zeroed out the requirement for low, moderate, and above moderate categories. So in order to, um, address the remaining RENA, we look at, first of all, we look at high-density sites. And, and because here in St. Helena, your high-density zoning district has a density of 16.1 to 28 units per acre, which meets the state default density of 20 units per acre for this type of suburban district, um, uh, suburban jurisdiction. So, uh, these are the sites that have been identified in the housing element. 684 McCorkle is the site that the city owns and has, um, a realistic capacity of nine units on that site. There are two sites at Spring Street. These were both identified off, in the 2009 housing element. They have single-family homes on them, but they're underutilized and could be developed at high-density development. And so for all of these realistic capacities, we are assuming the lower end of that range. So at the 16 units per acre. And then 821 Pope Street is the, uh, the property that I was just talking about. So all totaled, we have 62, a realistic capacity of 62 units on those four sites. And all, because these meet the default, the default density, the assumption is that all of those units would be affordable to low and very low-income households. That's not necessarily how it would end up being, but that's how the state, um, has us count them. So the 62 units, as you can see, far exceeds the four remaining units, but it also exceeds, even if we weren't counting what's under construction now or has been approved, it exceeds your very low and low-income unit, uh, unit requirement. There are also medium-density sites and these are zoned at a, a density range of 5.1 to 16 units. And all of these sites are sites that were in the, these were all in the previous housing element. And again, we're identifying realistic capacities at the lower end of these spectrums. So we have a total realistic capacity of 172 units on these six sites. Um, this does not mean that all of these sites are going to be developed within the housing element planning period. It's just identifying what, where the capacity is. So here is kind of a snapshot of what our various strategies are to meet the RENA requirement and also just to provide affordable housing in the community. Again, the, um, the RENA requirement's at the top and our remaining RENA is underneath it. We have capacity for 62 units at the high-density sites. Those are all for very low, allocated for very low and low. Medium-density sites, we're making assumption here because of the density, that they'll all be, um, affordable to above-moderate income households. But the reality is that the city has inclusionary zoning ordinance, requires 20% of those units to be affordable to various income levels depending on the size of the project and whether it's a rental or ownership property. But because of the HCD, um, regulations, we cannot assume what the, those affordability levels are for inclusionary zoning, so we just allocate them all to above-moderate. And then we have second units. The city has developed over the plan, previous planning period, 39 second units. So just based on the past production of second units, which is about 5.6 units per year, we can make a projection going forward, what the, uh, number of units that will be produced. And we've, um, which is 49 units. The city's already done 10 of those units, so this is the remaining 39 that are expected to be developed. And again, we've allocated those according to that second unit survey, which found, albeit a very small sample size, but 25% of were affordable to low, 50% affordable to moderate, and 25% affordable to above-moderate. So that's how we've allocated those units. But even if we weren't counting the second units, we wouldn't need them to meet any of the, uh, the income categories that are, uh, required. So, uh, finally, some key changes that we made to the Goals, Policies, and Programs section, or this, that's kind of standalone document. Um, first of all, we did base this on the evaluation of the 2009 housing element programs. We revised programs based on that evaluation. The evaluation was included in the Housing Needs Assessment that was distributed last April. We did receive some feedback on that. Um, so that's what we've used to make the changes. And we deleted programs that were either implemented or were, we, what staff felt, they were no longer relevant. There is one new program and this came from the, the input that we received at the community workshop. This is to pursue additional funding for affordable housing and it states, explore other options for affordable housing, including a real estate transfer tax and housing trust fund contributions from the wine and hospitality industry in Napa Valley. We haven't actually, um, tried to decide if any of the, if those were feasible or not, but just to put a program in there so that the, the city could, uh, consider that at some point in the future. So again, for next steps, where we would like to bring the draft to the city council next week and then, um, hopefully a few days after that, package up the draft and send it off to HCD. With their, after their 60-day review, we would be expecting their final letter to come back on April 28th and then bring it to the Planning Commission on May 5th. There's not a lot of days here, extra days, as you can see on our, in our schedule, and then have the city council adopt it on May 26. So that is the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Um, no, about this?
About this, yeah.
I don't know, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Actually, I do have a question. Since the second unit, um, program was so successful, I noticed in the, um- Since the second unit, um, program was so successful, I noticed in the, um, in the housing, in the, in the housing element, that there's a suggestion that we do away with, with the programs and put the money elsewhere. Um, do, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yes, um, I do.
What is that about?
Um, so, so some, th- those programs were, the success of the second unit program really has to do more with just the demand for second units. So, uh, most of those second units, thirty-nine second units that were developed over the last housing element period, were not developed because of the programs that are in the housing element. And a lot of those programs that were suggested for deletion were never actually implemented. So, um, so the idea was that since second units are, actually have been very successful in this community, and that perhaps the money, the, any available funding, um, or staff time to develop new programs should be put towards other, uh...
Because you think they will continue to be successful?
Yeah, but that is essentially, yes.
Okay, so you, you think that they don't need...
Just based on the past production without any programs to, to, uh, enhance their...
I was also wondering about the survey that you took in 2014. I mean, how many people were in that survey? There was a part of the...
Bobby, is your, is your microphone not on?
Yeah, it's on. I'm sorry, you can't hear me?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Um, so I was wondering about that survey.
Okay.
Who did that?
So the, the survey was, um, sent out to twenty-eight, and I have the, the numbers here, so I want to make sure I'm quoting correctly. The survey was sent out to twenty-eight property owners of record with, with second units on the property. And, um, in order to determine the affordability levels, we asked for the size of the unit, whether it was a studio or a one-bedroom, a two-bedroom, whether or not the unit was currently occupied, and what the rent was charged, either it was being currently charged or had been charged in the past. The city received thirteen responses. Of the thirteen responses, three of the property owners said that their unit was, was, had just been approved and it hadn't been built, or that it was under construction, or they were now, they weren't, hadn't occupied the, the primary unit yet. So that was three came off the top. So then of the ten remaining that we received, we had only four of those had identified what the rent was that they were charging or had currently charged. So we are basing the, um, the affordability levels on those four responses. So as I said, it is a very small sample size, but, um, but it is, that, we followed the, the normal way of doing the surveys and sent it out to everybody that we had. So without any kind of, and then we did look at Craigslist listings to see what second units are being, um, rented for on the market as well, to try to supplement this and get some additional information. So between those two sources, that's where we came up with the affordability levels. It's common not to get a very big response on these surveys, and, but without anything else other than saying, "Oh, I feel like they're all affordable to moderate." Um, you know, it's, it's the only evidence that we have on the record to use, so.
Okay, thank you.
I would have preferred a better response, obviously.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, you know, I guess my feeling on that is if they're not deed-restricted, you can't be counting them as affordable housing anyway, um, because, uh, you know, they're granny units. I mean, we're seeing more and more, I believe, that people are actually saying they're guest houses. And so I don't know how you can afford, uh, count those as affordable housing at this point, unless you deed-restrict them. And then it should be under the, the jurisdiction of Napa Housing, like all the rest of our affordable housing is. That's my personal opinion.
Yeah, my, my, I did some research in this a few years ago, and the, um, these, these for, uh, sec-, um, second unit programs in towns that are not restricted very much, um, you know, very much cover affordable, um, categories, either, you know, with a parent paying nothing, um, but not being in any other house in the community, or a, or a college student staying there, or families being able to buy a house because they can rent the second unit in the house, and they can afford the mortgage, so that there is a, there's a lot of research that, from other communities that have done this, um, this kind of program, that in, that indeed, there are quite a few affordable, um, um, how, there's a lot of affordable housing available without the restrictions. And there's not always, but there, there's a, there's a large percentage, but I'd be happy to share tho- that, um, data with anyone who is interested.
I, I had a quick question with regards to, um, new programs in HE four dot F, um, which was just a few slides ago.
Oh.
And it really speaks more to, uh, a general question, which is, if you don't specifically spell out a new program in your element, does that preclude the city from, you know, you know, in, in the future, in the period, time period of the element, to introduce a new program?
Oh, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that you can't introduce a new program. And generally, when we try to write these programs, we want to keep them pretty general also, so that the city has some leeway in how it's going to develop an ordinance. We don't want to write an ordinance within the, within the, um, the general plan, which is, this is an element of the general plan. So, uh, but it, certainly, you can add to it or do other, to, to do other things. It's just if you have the programs in the housing element, then you've got direction to, to, um, to approach, to implement those programs.
I have a same question, that same vein. Do you, if you, since we were not meeting our RINA numbers, do you have to have a new program? Is it a requirement to have the new programs as part of the, no?
No, no, you don't have to have a new program.
Um, I had an other question on, on the Pope Street, um, all the east side, um, opportunity sites. I was just wondering how you, is it, is it considered an internal inconsistency? Because there are, there are two things on with the goals, um, that there need to be equal housing opportunities, um, and to avoid economic segregation. That's one of the goals, um, for the housing, and also to encourage a balance of housing types throughout the entire community. I know there's some of that, but to change the, uh, the key sites are all on the east side, or, you know, the McCorkle, I mean, the, you know, the McCorkle and the Pope Street. I was just wondering, is there any sense of, um, inconsistency there with those two goals?
Uh, aren't the Spring Street sites so on the west side?
Could be, yeah. The Springs, yeah, but I was thinking of the Pope Street.
Yeah, I believe those are both, well, but if we have two sites on the west side and two sites on the east side, I mean, we, we're just identifying all the high-density sites that are, that are available.
So that wouldn't be seen as inconsistent with the goals of, um, balancing the housing and avoiding economic segregation?
It, I, I wouldn't think so, but that would be, you know, open to your interpretation.
And I'd like to take that one a little bit further, Bobby, and, and, and the fact there's, that they're showing two here on the west side, um, that I know, um, have just recently been sold, and, and they're certainly not planning to put affordable housing on there, because I know what they're putting on them, and I don't know how we can call those opportunity sites when we know what they're, they're talking about putting on them.
That was going to be my question. Is there any...
That really bothers me.
Yeah, well, that, that was kind of my question, in going through all the opportunity sites. Is there any correlation with approaching owners, and owners are open to it? I mean, how do we know that...
That's not, that's not a part of the analysis. It's not a requirement. We simply have to identify the sites that are appropriately zoned, that meet the state default density in this case, and that are available. So, as, it doesn't mean that the property owner has to intend to develop it, but if the site is either vacant or it's underutilized, so in these cases, they're single-family homes when they, they're zoned for high-density uses, then those are considered to be available. Um, to just, to talk to the property owner and ascertain what their intention is, it's really, it's not really relevant, because we're talking about an eight-year period, and things change. You know, people die, people sell their properties, um, somebody...
Really target sites versus available sites? But the state vernacular is available, so we use that?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
Zoning availability. I spoke with the person at, at California Housing, and they said, I asked her, I said, "Do the property owners of opportunity sites have to have any intention of developing them?" And she said, "No, they don't have to have any intention of developing them," so.
Yeah. Now, by available, if there, I've worked with communities where there was, um, a site that was in their affordable housing overlay zone, but there was a long-term lease on the, and, so that long-term lease was going to be most, if not all, of the housing element period, so that's not available. So that we would, we took off of the site, but, and barring a, a long-term lease or some, um, environmental issues, uh, you know, we wouldn't, they, they would be considered available.
Thank you very much.
Okay, sure.
It was a very nice presentation. Does anyone else have any other questions? So I guess, moving forward, Victor, do you have a suggestion on how we attack this? Or...
Um, perhaps we hear from the public.
I'm sorry.
It's kind of a next step.
Okay.
And we do have a PowerPoint, one of the, uh, folks in the audience gave us, so we're just loading up for them.
Okay, so we'll wait for the...
Well, we could probably start with some others, and then once we get...
Okay, so we'll just kind of do a little mix. I'd like to open up public comment.
Somebody going to entertain us later? I see a keyboard here.
I was wondering what that was.
That's a keyboard, yeah. Um, good evening again, planning commission and staff. I want to thank the staff who worked so hard on this, on this document. I think, uh, this document is, is very well-done. It was a little difficult to read because of, I, I understand from Ms. O'Rourke, that's the state's idea to have the underlines and the strike-throughs and all that. It was especially difficult when it came to numbers. It was really hard to tell what you meant. But I know a lot of work went into it, and I appreciate that work. You know, it was really, it was good reading. It wasn't as good as Shakespeare, and it wasn't as exciting as William Kent Kruger, but it was good reading, and I appreciate that it was written in such a way that it was. I regret that we didn't have more time to look at it. I've spent the better part of two days reading these documents. You folks had other things to read on top of that. Uh, and I think it's really, uh, this is one of the most important elements in all the parts of the general plan, and to have to consider it in this short period of a time, and then go to the city council in one week, I think, I, I think that's really a tragedy. So I'd like to talk about many things I noticed in reviewing both the assessment and housing element goals, policies, and eight-year action plan, but with the time restriction and out of courtesy to other speakers, I will concentrate on three things. Number one, there's entirely too much emphasis in both of these documents on the use of second units as the panacea for solving the affordable housing shortage. There is some lack of continuity in the two documents. The assessment talks about accommodations and incentives for building second units, and the goals in policies has that crossed out, so I'd like to know which one is right. I know there was some mention of second units in the settlement of the Calderon lawsuit. That should be explained here to all of us, because it affects how second units are addressed. Housing policy implies social values. Our emphasis on second units could be seen as a new birth control method. Only at most, a couple and a small baby can live in a second unit. Do we welcome people who can afford larger market-rate housings along with their families, but discourage less fortunate people with families? Secondly, I read with great interest the section on construction costs. If you do the math, you will surely come out to the conclusion that building nine to twelve units on that half an acre of the McCorkle property that the city bought will not pencil out. It absolutely will not pencil out. So that is gonna, the city's gonna lose money in the building of tho- of those units, as well as the ongoing maintenance of the property. Number three, I totally disagree with policy to limit growth of affordable units to the RINA numbers. The jobs-housing imbalance supports my opinion. Number four, it was completely wrong to eliminate the Adams Street property and the Hunter property from the list of key opportunity sites. Whose preferred Adams Street visioning map did you use? And, and Ms. O'Rourke here is saying that decision was made by staff. I didn't know staff had that kind of power, and I'm not sure staff should have that kind of power. Are we courting another lawsuit by eliminating the Hunter property? Number five, language in these documents continue to refer to flood hazard with no acknowledge, all, no acknowledgement of the comprehensive flood management and river restoration project completed in 2010. Thank you very much.
Sandy Erickson, Scott Street, and I'll be real quick. Um, I second Pat's comments, uh, about second units, and I recall distinctly at that meeting saying that most of the second units were rented or, uh, be, living by family, or living in by family members. And because they were charged so little, um, it, they, it was because they were family members, not because they qualified for low-income housing. Um, so having that twisted all around, does the town no good? And secondly, uh, also I second her comments about the Hunter Street property and the Adams Street property. I sat in this very room for the last four years, fighting every single syllable of a general plan that was ripped apart by people with a political interest, and that political interest was not having housing near them. This was such a strong motivation that, uh, the former mayor had to recuse herself on the subject. So, uh, saying that this somehow is due to the site, or the proposal, or, uh, any discussion, uh, having to do with the origin of the housing itself is not true. That's political, clear and simple, and it still is. And finally, no one has addressed the issue of cumulative load that St. Helena owes the rest of the state. St. Helena has dodged its obligations for years, or else we wouldn't be in this situation. And a huge consideration was whether that obligation to the state was cumulative, and for us now to have only thirty-one that we had to come up with, I would question that, um, rather than be surprised from the state that, "Oh, no, you have a bigger load than that, because the rest of the state's been building low-cost housing while we have been escaping the, uh, duty to do so." Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I swore I was gonna get out of this business, but I'm back again. Steve Goldfarb, Belavista Way, and just, for clarification as to why I was, I'm, I'm standing up here, aside from being a member of our town, St. Helena, on the board, I was the chairperson of St. Helena Housing Committee for a number of years until I got fired. I, first of all, I want to thank staff. I think a remarkable, a remarkable amount of work has been done since last year, and I'm sure it's just been done in the relatively recent future to make this document much more readable and much more comprehensive. And I would say to you, if your purpose is not to build a unit in this town over the next eight years, don't make any changes. Just send it off to the state, because you probably comply with every different, uh, specific requirement of HD, HCD, but you don't comply with anything that revolves around the housing element. First of all, let's remember that the housing element is part of the city's general plan. And as part of the city's general plan, you are charged with coming up with something that makes sense for this community. In addition, you have to meet some state requirements, but this document is geared just to meeting those state requirements. And we are doing ourselves no service by doing that. This town has been torn apart for at least the four or eight years with competing groups arguing back and forth whether it should be this property, or this much could be built here, and it shouldn't be built on the east side, or why not put it on the west side. It's time that we try to figure out something that works for the entire community, and I don't think what we have here comes any closer to doing that than we had in two thousand and nine, when the last housing element was approved. And the best example of that is, we had a housing element in two thousand and nine, we said, we had seventy-six units, there was some debate whether it was actually a hundred and four, but at least seventy-six units we had to build, and we had all of these policies, the same policies you have here. And guess what? We built one unit, because those policies and these programs didn't work. Everybody had some great solutions, how are we gonna solve the problem, but we're not finding it here. And if you would, just for a second, I just want to talk about the housing needs assessment, because, you know, that's the document you send off to the state, and the state says, "Oh, you got all these housing units." Well, for the most part, they're the same units you had... Well, for the most part, they're the same units you had in 2009. And yet during that entire period, none of those units turned over to be real. And yet we're saying, oh, we still have all these same units. Well, the problem is, is that almost all of these units are not available. Okay? The fact that they may be vacant or they have a house on it and it's a big lot doesn't mean, oh, yeah, that's a great place to build housing. The housing committee, and I don't know how many people, countless people after this, went out and talked to the individual owners of those properties. And the fact of the matter was, none of them said, I want to build or I will make my property available. They were all, either they refused to comment or they just said, no, I'm not going to do it. Yet we find them back here as examples of property that's gonna be available for development. Two properties that are available for development, as has been stated, have been taken out of the list. And I don't know how they were taken out, because that would be a political decision, should not have been done by staff to say, oh, we're not gonna use either Hunter or we're not going to use Adams Street. So it's confusing to me how these policy decisions are already wound up in this document. I hope what they're doing is saying, look, this is, this is a choice we made, but it is your decision whether they're in or they're out. But aside from those two, you've got McCorkle, which the city bought. Yet the city has not in the last year been able to figure out a way to finance this because the city doesn't have any money in their housing fund. So I'm not sure that's really a viable site. I hope it is. But at this point, it would be good if there was more meat on it to show while, while it is available. And I, it strikes me funny that a new property was added now on Pope for the first time because the indication was back in May after we had the last public session, that the owner indicated that they wanted to build 19 units of senior housing. It's the same owner who told us shortly before that, that, no, he just wanted to keep a single-family residence there and leave him alone. So to my knowledge, nothing's happened with that at that point. But if the criteria is, an owner is willing to consider putting affordable housing on there and therefore it should be on this site, why do we still have on this site all those housing units? All those sites which the owners say they don't want affordable housing on their property? I think we're just heading for disaster to just rote-ly take the information we had from 2009 and say, that's still our policy today. I think it's your job to come up with a policy that makes sense so that we can actually build some housing here that this community. I mean, I think everybody's gonna agree that there is a need for housing. They may disagree where it should be, but it's time for this planning commission and this city council to decide how we're actually gonna build housing. And if we can, maybe we can all stop fighting one another. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, this is Jessie. I live and also manage Hunts Grove Apartments. And for the last four months or so, I've been also managing La Pradera Apartments in Calistoga. So Hunts Grove is one of the two affordable housing complexes in town. And I currently have 56 families and I have a waitlist of approximately 50 people. So one suggestion that I have is for this study to include talking to someone like myself so that we can identify what kind of people it, it is that we need to accommodate. Because I also have the, the feeling that the second units are just like its house. And they're just, they have people, there are family members living there, students or a parent, but they're not specifically help the need for, for affordable housing for bigger families. I'm also concerned that, that in trying to meet the deadline, we are rushing to make decisions. So I would like to, I, you know, I also think, let me see, I have a lot of thoughts, sorry. I was kinda writing notes all over the place. But I would like not to rush into meeting a deadline when there's no intention to develop anything or, like Steve said, you know, just leave it as is. I also would like to suggest that the, whatever second unit houses are, that they be identified. And what I do in an annual basis is certify that the people that occupy the units at Hunts Grove are eligible every year. And also to find out if there's a consequence if they don't meet those, if they're not eligible to meet those things. So I think the same should apply to the second homes. And then also, we also need to know if someone's going to be doing that, someone's going to be enforcing and making sure that the tenants are eligible, income-eligible, who that entity is and that everyone knows who that is. I think that's all I have to do. I mean, I had a lot more, but for now, that's what I would like to, to say. And then also I brought, this is personal information, I won't be sharing it, but just so you know, I have a copy of my late waitlist that is just a month old.
Thank you. And actually, we have a question for you from Commissioner Kistner.
Jessie, you said that you have a waitlist. And, and I believe if I, if I read this correctly before my eyes crossed, I, I believe that I read that you don't have a waitlist.
Um, I heard that just a couple days ago and I don't know where they got that information because my-
I think I read that in, I don't, I don't know if it was in the assessment of the housing.
Grace, the microphone.
Um, that is incorrect. No one's, no one's called me. My waitlist has not been closed for as long as I've been there.
Most of the work on the housing needs assessment was done last year. I did call, I believe it was Hunts Grove, I mean, there's Stone, Stonebridge. I did call and was told, whatever I was told is what's in the housing.
I was very-
So if the information has changed since then, we can certainly update that information.
Yeah, well, because I, I was very surprised that I saw that. Because I think you had, I, I think you had Stonebridge correctly. But then when you said, when you said that there was none over there, I thought, I, I don't believe that because I've been over, I, I'm on the multicultural committee, so I visit with these people quite frequently.
Well, that was the information. And perhaps, you know, whoever we spoke to gave us the wrong information at the time.
Jessie can probably give you a list.
But I'm happy to, to correct that.
Thank you.
John Salesville Avenue. I think that there's been a lot of work done on this. I congratulate Ms. O'Rourke on putting out a very professional document. I think that this will fly at the state level with no problem at all. And you should be able to rest for another eight years. However, from my point of view, we're papering over a lot of problems here with some, if not bad information, but at least some that is very misleading. First of all, when in looking at the performance last year and looking at, as I thought, 37 second units that were put in, in the past one. And our survey that surveyed 14 of the 37, or 28 of the 37 with only 13 responses is not a very good indication about how those are being used. And if they're not being used for low-income housing and not being monitored as such, I question the validity of using them in our, our report. And obviously, the state allows it, so it must be okay. To say that we can fill out our needs here in town with second units, obviously, if we're, if we have no intention of providing affordable housing, we can certainly do that. Because people love to have second units on their property. They're guest houses, that's exactly what they are. And we're facilitating that by giving the homeowner special bennies for doing that. You know, we allow them to have a little, a little larger house on the property. We forgive the floor area ratio. And, you know, it's, it's a benefit for them to do it. With respect to the site inventory, I was on the housing committee, I was on the general plan committee. I've been on two housing committees here in the city in the past seven or eight years. We've talked to people that own these properties. And I just heard someone say, to qualify, a site must be available. Well, to make a site available, the property owner should say, the site's available. And without any qualification, the people that, or people that discussed this with said, no, these sites are not available for various reasons, primarily family reasons. Any rate, this should fly, shouldn't be a problem. And to say that we can build four very low units in the next eight years shouldn't be, shouldn't be too big a problem to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm David Graeble. I'm with the Latinos and Nidos in Napa Advocacy Group, which focuses on a range of issues involving the Latino community and other low-income folks in Napa County. We agree with Mr. Goldfarb, Estelle, and the other speakers here who have some serious problems with the draft housing element. Although, like them, I would like to acknowledge that Christine O'Rourke has done a very good job. You got your money's worth from her. But I don't think there are, there has been adequate public input into this housing element. We got a late night, one late night look at the draft, or explanation of the draft. And it's going to the city council next week. That's, that's not enough time. The, the sites are problematic at best. Sites, you must have adequate sites to meet your, your real housing need. And maybe that's not the same as what A-BAG, we know who the director of A-BAG was. And we have a, a, a sense of how St. Helena's RENA numbers came way down in this, in this period, even though one unit of affordable housing had been built over the, this current housing element period. That, that should not be acceptable in a community that cares about its economy, its environment, and about the people who, and families who, who, who work here. So the, the city, I understand, and maybe they've been repealed, but the city has restrictions on when you can build affordable housing. And there may, there, there was, at least until very recently, a conditional use permit for, in, in effect for affordable housing that I, I don't think you have ever eliminated. You know, I may be wrong there, but if, if that's there, then none of these sites qualify as affordable housing sites under HCD standards. The second unit survey that must be done to, in order to justify including any second units in meeting your regional housing needs, that has not been done as required by HCD standards. And I think your consultant has said, there's some very serious, when you're, when you're basing it on one reply that says, well, yeah, I, I rent at a lower income, you can't, that's not enough. If you're gonna try to use second units, you've got to, you gotta do that survey, you gotta do it right. And it hasn't been done. And, and it shouldn't be done. There's nothing, you cannot force those second units to be rented to lower-income households or rented at all. Somebody wants to put their office there, put it, go on Airbnb, whatever. The city's not gonna, gonna give them a hard time. So just cut out the stuff about second units. The, we'd like the city to set aside 10 acres, 10 acres, anywhere, lots. But they've gotta have some buildable capacity. You can't build affordable housing on a half-acre lot. Or, or the Magnolia, I'm sorry, not the Magnolia, the, the, the one lot that the city bought-
McCorkle.
McCorkle, yeah. That's not gonna work. It's not gonna pencil out. No affordable housing developer's gonna, gonna, gonna put up affordable units there. There are problems with all these other sites. And the one site that did have an affordable component, the Hunter property, where there's already an active proposal under consideration that included a bunch of affordable units, somehow has been yanked out. What's going on there? If, if there were a concern about meeting affordable housing needs, you gotta put that, that Hunter site back in and the Adams site too. So we'll, we'll try to get some, some of these comments in writing. Let's see if we can fix this either before or after it goes, the draft goes off to HCD. Because I don't think, I don't think HCD's gonna approve this, frankly. I hope they don't. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Kathy Coldiron. Well, I hope that they do recommend having second units. I must be the only person up here who can say this, but for over 22 years, I've rented a room out. I think it's the last three months, I haven't had anybody because I decided I'd take a break, have a little privacy for three months. But for 22, 23 years, I have rented a room out. I have rented it out. Right now, it costs about $700, $100 security deposit, and half the water bill. That has started in the last six months. I am very disappointed that I went to the city hall today because I found out this meeting was gonna happen. I know over the years, we've gotten a little bit of information out over second units and how they work. But obviously, there seems to be a drastic misunderstanding as to how that works. And I'm not gonna go into all the details tonight, but I did do the details a couple years ago. Unfortunately, Matt was there for the talk and I think he can verify we did a pretty good job. Incentives for doing second units is important. And one of the things that I'm very disappointed in is I went in today to ask, what is the second unit program that we had that was so successful that now we're not gonna do anymore because it was successful? Because I didn't even know we had a program to begin with. So I was told that I could come tonight and ask questions or whatever. So if you had a survey that went out, I agree with the other person, even though we have different opinions. I don't think that was a very good survey to use for giving recommendations to the city council. I was never contacted. I know three other people that are single people living in their homes and have rented houses out for over 22 or 23 years. And we never got a survey. I think you have to have a survey that is more encompassing of just one or two people and asking very specific questions. And if you want some help, I would suggest you talk to me because I've, I've already gone to many of these towns. I went into those towns and I asked them for information. I didn't even make an appointment and they gave me all this information. I think that that should be happening in our town. I'm guessing, and I can be wrong, so tell me if I'm wrong. I'm guessing, and I can be wrong, so tell me if I'm wrong, I'm guessing that the program that you did was incentive for second units for new construction. I don't know whether to be against it or for it, because I don't even know what it includes, but I'm guessing it went over on the project that was over there by Magnolia Oaks, I'm just guessing that. Or other new homes with second units. I think that's okay, but I haven't read all the details, but I think what you need to do, if you want a successful program, you need to offer incentives to the people that have already been living here for 20, 30 years. And give them an incentive, waive some building fees, so that they can set up a second unit. I don't legally have a second unit. I do not have a separate entrance, I do not have a little microwave or refrigerator in there, they usually use my kitchen. I would have loved to have done that. The reason why I gave the presentation a couple of years ago, because I'm doing a remodel, I've already done it. And my whole idea was to make it legal and have it counted. Why shouldn't my place be counted? I've been doing it for 22 or 23 years. I have two other friends that have been doing it for over 20 years. Why aren't we counted? You can ask any of my neighbors on my court, you can knock on all their doors and ask them, and they'll tell you, I've been doing it. And they've been single people, and yes, that does not cover all of what we need in this town, it's primarily single people. But the most interesting thing I noticed in that meeting in April at the firehouse, was that there was a graph as to what our household makeup demographics was in this town. And it's, I believe, it was a third or more are single households. So, in actuality, I'm mirroring back the demographics of this town. Now, that doesn't mean we should exclude having families. We need families, housing, low-income housing, but single rooms provide for those single people that are in our community. There are people that are divorced, that suddenly their income drops, they need more income. That's already happened on my cul-de-sac. There's two other people there that need more income, so they are renting out home, renting out rooms. They weren't contacted. Also, infill, this is a really easy way not to have more construction, not to take up a lot more water. Infill is supposed to be what we're all supposed to be doing in towns for sustainability. It does work, I think it's a great way to do it. It gives people that move here, that have never lived in the town, an opportunity to meet more people more easily, and sort of feel like a part of a town. And it's not for everybody, but I think people have been happy living at my house. I, I've had a great time doing it over the years. And I think the price is right. And I've never had to force anybody to look for another place. In fact, I tell them, go out and look for another place, if it seems like too much, call me and come back. Most of the time, they come back. There's very few people that are gonna be able to move into a place, pay $100 security, and $700 a month. That's about as cheap as it gets. So, I would really recommend that you not drop second units, and do a little bit more of thorough research on the people that have been doing it for years and years, and continue doing it for new development. The other reason I think for the new development, second units will work, is because as people get older, oftentimes, they either end up having their parents come to live with them, or they get older, and they end up staying in the second unit and renting out the house, so that they can pay their bills and retire in some sort of comfort. So, I, I don't want you to have a bad taste in your mouth about second units, because they are out there, they do work, and to remember the fact that a large portion of this town is made up of single households. Thank you.
Mary Stevenson, Chibley Court, and I'm on the board of our town, St. Helena. You've heard from about half of our board tonight. We got this plan on late on Saturday, late on Friday, spent a lot of time looking at it, met it, and looked at it some more yesterday. I, too, want to commend the staff. You got anything for me?
I believe maybe the computer may have fallen asleep. Maybe the monitors fell asleep?
I think that Jennifer Phillips and the planning staff has done a remarkable job in a very difficult situation to get this thing put in front of us. I am disappointed that, that there is not more change in this plan, based on our meeting last May. It's been, what, eight months since then? And I see very little change in this, including some of the updating of the facts. But I do think there, if, if I look at it and say, we have to get this done, we're all up, and they have all of our backs against the same wall, which I haven't seen in a lot of years, but I think we're there now. And so, I went back and I read, the, the primary function of the housing needs assessment is to provide relevant information on existing and projected need, and identify potential sites. And the instruction was that the, the commission should review that part of the document, the needs assessment document, for accuracy of information. So, we're just looking at accuracy for the housing assessment. Can you move it forward? So, there's some points of discrepancy. Fifty-one percent of the affordable units in the last cycle, and I forgot to fill in the percentage for this cycle, are second units, and there's no clear-cut data on whether those units are actually affordable. We're basing this on a survey of four units. I don't think that's data, I think that's conjecture. We also have questions about the opportunity sites, and that's all been addressed. But there's some agreement on, that we have with some of the facts in this, and they're disturbing, that 78% of the workers are commuting into town. Seventy-eight percent of the people who work in St. Helena commute in. The median salary of residents is not adequate to rent or purchase local housing. And there's very little, there has been very little affordable housing built in the last cycle. I mean, those are things that are said in this needs assessment that we agree with. The goals and policies are different. They are specific goals, objectives, implementing actions, the city has chosen to meet the projected need. And the instruction for the commission is that you should review the document on a broader and more, and to have a different kind of focus on that. And it should be, the city's goal in the relationship, it should be the city's goal in relationship to housing beyond meeting the required HCD RENA numbers. That's my emphasis, but that's what it says in the plan, and what specific steps should be taken. So, based on that, if we look at the, at the, what it says in the needs assessment, and this is exact lift from the needs assessment, it says that we made six, we made 60% of our goal for last time. Fifty-one percent of those are in second units. Second units that we don't know if they're actually being rented as affordable housing. Yeah, they might have somebody's grandmother, somebody's kid in them, but there's no families living in those units with more than one person. And there's a little, there's a big difference between renting a room to somebody, and housing a family that's working in St. Helena with their kids in school, and two working parents. Can you move that forward? So, if you took out those second units, we would have met 30% of our RENA for the last period. Can you go forward? So, these are the quantified objectives going into the housing element now, and these are lifted directly out of the housing element. It says we're going to do 18, and construct, whatever that is, new units, and we have another 10 units. That's what we said we're gonna do. And if you, if you, this is another direct lift, it says we already, because we've already either built or have permitted, four in very low, one in low, four in moderate, and 26 and, and above moderate, that we are only going to build four very low houses between now and 2023. So, is that it? So, is this town going to build four more low-income houses and rehab 10 others? Is that all we're going to do? I mean, I think that's just disgraceful. Disgraceful. Can you give me my last slide? So, if, if this is a procedural document that we have to do, so we don't get our hands slapped, because of all the problems that we've had in the past, then let's come out and say that. And if, but if that's the truth, then what is the city's actual plan to deal with our housing crisis? It needs to start here at the planning commission, and it needs to be addressed at city council. And you've heard a lot of frustration from us over the last few years. And as I said, I really don't wanna direct that against the staff, because I don't, it's not, this is not the current staff issue. But if we're only gonna build four affordable houses, if that's what we're gonna tell the state we're going to do, between now and 2023, then shame on us.
I'm Bill Savage, I'm on the same committee. I, I was just wondering if we couldn't put a general statement in this document that would indicate a, it's kind of a commitment or a willingness to look at what some realistic needs were, based on what we've seen in, in the, in the data section, you know? Because like, like people have said about the second units, unless there's a commitment and somebody managing that, it really is kind of wishy-washy to count that as, as affordable housing, although it might contribute to it. But we, I think we need to talk about stuff that people can actually hang their hat on, on using, you know, the, the people that need it, which, which we know, we all know we have plenty of those. So, I would like to see something in this that says, we, we, we recognize the fact that we need to go a little bit further than just building four units in the next eight years. We need to solve a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at the public comment? Seeing none, I'm gonna close it, and invite Commissioner deliberation. And questions for staff, if you, if there are any. Can you address the change of Adam Street and Hunter property, why it went from available site to other site?
I think mostly because they were somewhat more speculative, maybe even controversial. It's, it's a judgment call, and, and I think it's the, one of the previous speakers alluded to, I mean, it's, it's simply kind of a staff judgment call, and it's the, and staff's not setting policy and doesn't pretend to set policy. It's simply, as a practical matter, there's, those seem speculative, it's that simple, there's no hidden agenda, and obviously, if the, the commission council wants to move them back in, into another category is, is less speculative, then that's fine. Then one perhaps gets into some of the politics about the Hunter project, are you endorsing it by doing so, or saying it's gonna happen, yada, yada. So, but it, it's just, just a, a judgment call. I mean, and, and if, if I could, just kind of expand a little bit, I, I mean, there've been a lot of comments tonight, and I appreciate, and Christine appreciates it, and a lot of heartfelt comments, which is, which is good. I mean, it, it just strikes me that this process doesn't need to be this controverse, so controversial, or, or-
Contentious.
Contentious, probably a, a better way to say it. I mean, what we have here is in the housing element, and the state has given us certain numbers, and most communities tear their hair and wring their hands about the numbers being too high, and having to meet those, and, and agonize over it, et cetera, et cetera. St. Helena finds itself in a position, and we didn't put ourselves necessarily in that position. It relates to both the state, and more specifically, to MTC, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, taking a position from a policy point of view, that they wanna see housing developed in more of the inner urban core, and less reliance on kind of the outer-line communities. A part of their function or focus is simply on, on traffic. They wanna, they don't wanna create situations where people, they're essentially forcing housing to be built in areas where there's not tons of job creation. I, I think St. Helena is not, you know, a, a, a great engine in the Bay Area of job creation. So, it's, it's a number that the city didn't come up with, it's a number that MTC gave to us. Now, what we do with it, and how we describe it, I, I think is a policy issue for the commission and council to discuss. But just to make it clear, it doesn't, that number doesn't set any sort of policy position by anybody, other than MTC saying where they would prefer housing to be built. The other kind of issue that keep, kept coming up is, is the whole second unit thing. And I, I think what we're saying here, and I think Christine was pretty clear, we don't need the second units to count towards meeting the RENA numbers, they're sufficiently low. I, and I agree, I think saying a second unit is gonna count as an affordable unit, particularly very low income, is not realistic. Even if it's deed-restricted, you're probably gonna find the average homeowner, who, who's the one that's gonna be implementing it, saying, well, I'm not gonna rent it, I'm not renting it, you know, and a family member, you know, may be in it. So, but on the other hand, second units fulfill a, a, a big niche of housing, as just described. They provide, by their very nature, housing that's more affordable. I mean, given the size of the unit and how it's set up, so it's meeting an obvious niche. And, and this, just to clarify, the city doesn't have any sort of second unit incentive program. It's simply, the city has a number of policies and, and requirements, and its ordinance, only ordinance, about how it handles second units. For instance, it says that second units don't count for, for calculating floor area ratio. Now, I don't think the city's out anything by having that provision, it simply is gonna encourage some people that might not otherwise build second units to build them. It doesn't take away from the building of any other sort of low-income or lower-income units. So, it, it's being argued like these are two points in conflict, when the opposite is true, they're not. Second units provide a certain housing need, I think the city would be, it would be not appropriate to say, we're gonna meet all our housing requirements with second units, and we're not saying that. And I think the numbers are pretty clear on that. So, I, I, and, so once again, I don't see that as a bone of contention or argument, it's, it's something that, that undoubtedly fits, fits, you know, certain housing needs. So, just as a point of clarification, and, and once again, I, this, this process, I realize the timing is tight, and just to make clear, well, two things. One is, we do have, during the eight-week state review period, it is an opportunity for us to look at, you know, adding, modifying the text of the housing element, and then we would submit that to HCD and say, oh, by the way, we made these changes. And I think Christine's the expert on this, but as long as the changes are housing element, housing-friendly, which is kind of the drift of what I'm hearing, I think they would find those as acceptable. And, and the second is, and I think somebody appropriately described it, if we miss the May 31st date, it's a hand slap. And as Christine described, it's not the end of the world, we just have to how, update our housing element four years from now, and, and there may be an issue with getting certain, you know, bond or, or grant programs. So, but, but it, it doesn't make sense to miss that date, there's no upside to it. The fact is, though, the day after the, the 31st, the commission could entertain some changes or updates to the housing element. I mean, the housing element, like any general plan element, is a moving target and can be updated. So, for better or, or for worse, we find ourselves in something of a tight timeline, but number one, we've got eight weeks, if we want to, to try to utilize it to put some stuff in the document that folks can agree should be in there. And then, number two, we've got as much time as anybody wants, after May 31st, to look at making changes additions, and additions to the elements. So, if there are issues, the need for their study, for their surveys, et cetera, there's, there's plenty of time to, to do that. So, anyway, just a little bit of digression there.
Thank you for that, Victor.
I have a question. On page 10 of the summary, in HE 1 point H, it talks about, improve and enhance the local preference policy to possibly include people needed for work during city emergencies. The current local preference policy gives weighted preference to local residents as regulated affordable housing units become available. This benefit will be extended to persons employed in St. Helena that are needed during a city emergency, such as firefighters and police officers. I just need some clarification. My understanding was that if, for federal, for federally regulated housing, that no preferences could, no local preferences could be given. So, I'm not clear on that.
Christine.
Yeah, that's true. So, it would only be affordable housing if it was being funded entirely by the city. So, you could have preferences in that case, but most grants would not, you would not be able to have any preferences for that.
So, the regulated affordable housing means city-regulated affordable housing, not-
Yeah, that, that, that's what I, I mean, again, this is-
Yeah, that's what I, I mean, again, this is a program that is from your old housing element, but that's my understanding of what it means.
All right. Thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions for staff? No? No, yeah, let's deliberate if there are no further questions.
I think, no.
So if I could suggest, really there are two documents before you. One is the needs assessment, which has been indicated as primarily informational. So perhaps if commissioners have issues or things they can consider to be inaccurate, you could just submit an email to me about those. And maybe the time is best spent on the policy document in terms of the wording there if such an approach is agreeable.
Well, Victor, I don't think it should be just the commission. I believe that if these people out here have comments that they need to meet, I think we're trying to be transparent now with what we're doing and I, and I think that everyone should be entitled to bring in their comments between now and whenever.
Oh, sure. And particularly, I mean, I, we definitely heard comments.
I don't know if we want another study session after this is gone. I don't know how everybody else feels, but I'm not sure that's a bad idea so that we get it out to everybody in town.
So just to throw an idea out there, just to kind of get the ball moving, we could potentially recommend this to the city council tonight to get it going to meet the deadline and then maybe schedule a study session sometime late March, early April, again, in that eight-week period. So then when it comes back to us, we have that time. And then it comes back to us again on May 5th to really solidify it. That way we can just.
If we had a study session with the general public, then they could also give us their comments.
Exactly. I mean, I'm, that's something I am comfortable with.
Could we also include, if we have specific things we want added, could we add those tonight so that's included before it goes to city council?
Yeah, if you have something specific, like right now, I'm, I see this as really a rough draft and I kind of just assumed that it was a rough draft and there's nothing that really like called out to myself that this is like really wrong. It just seemed like implementing what we had done with the special needs and the housing thing that we did a few weeks back.
Right, right.
But if you have a few things, let's definitely get them to Victor now so it goes to the city council now. And so that's what goes to HCD, yeah.
I mean, particularly things that are policy related as relate to the actual language. And just in, in looking forward to this study session, let's say in late March, whatever date we set, if the comments could focus on the actual language of the policies, so if folks could say either delete this policy or add this wording to this policy, whatever folks would think would be more effective, that would make life, I think, a lot easier, number one, for staff and then number two, for the commission to deliberate on. I think the public tonight has made kind of clear what the issues are, but it would just be helpful to see what kind of wording changes folks feel would be warranted to deliver the kinds of things people need to see or would like to see delivered.
Because I'm concerned that, you know, I'm not really concerned, but we're, we have this draft, we're going to add our changes, city council's going to get it, they're going to have their changes and that's what's going to be going. I'd like for the citizens to have that draft to kind of go off with the word and everything because this draft could, lord knows what the city council could do to it next week. So.
Well, I had a.
Well, aren't we supposed to make some changes tonight?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. So throw, yeah, so let's.
Go ahead, yeah. Okay.
Commissioner.
I would like to add one statement that's really important to me. And I do not support approving substandard housing for poor people. I feel that people who don't have money deserve the same standards, public safety standards, as everyone. I think waivers for, you know, are appropriate, but I think when you start making housing that substandard, simply, that density goes way up and setbacks aren't happening simply because you have to pencil out, I think there are ways we can do this with, I think there are better ways to do it. I just cannot support that. I don't know. That's just a suggestion to consider.
No, no, no. So do you know what policy that references Bobby in the document?
Well, sure. I can send you with a reference to every single one where it says, all right, I'll do that because there's several.
Perfect. Thank you, Bobby.
Yeah.
Bobby, do you have any others? I mean, do you want to do it page by page? Because if we just do it on the, this one, it's only 27 pages. We could just, if you have a comment, we could go.
I have one on page eight, maybe if somebody has one.
Well, do we have ones on one through eight then, before that? Do you have any?
I have no more general comment and I'm going to.
I guess I got, I have one on page one, Matthew. On H1E, it's saying amend the general plan to reconfigure the urban limit line in accordance to the adopted Adams Street property preferred alternative. And if we have a preferred alternative, which was done in a charrette about six, seven years ago, then I don't know why we're taking the Adams Street property off of the list of opportunity sites.
It's not coming off. It's just not on the.
It's not an opportunity.
It's not on the.
That's right. And it should be.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I don't think that's consistent.
And then, and Matt, you said that you had an over umbrella comment that you'd like to make before we get into the specifics?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, Matt. I didn't know that there's an umbrella.
No, 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 it's all right.
Maybe microphone?
Come back. I'll call out at the end.
Okay. Okay, so do we have any other comments that we'd like to add through pages one through nine?
Yeah. There was one on page eight, the goal policy.
Okay.
It says ensure that affordable housing gets built. I'm just wondering about that language. How do we ensure it? Pardon?
Great language.
Well, right, but I'm, but I'm asking, how is that, how will it be ensured? What happens if it, you know, what does that mean to ensure it? I mean, that, that.
What page you on, Bobby?
It's on, she's on page eight.
Page A, goal one policy.
And it's HE 1.3.
Okay. So I'm just curious.
So what I'm going to do is simply forward everyone's comments. You don't need to vote on them or anything. I'm just, I'll just forward them to council.
So using that language, you know, it implies that something will happen if it doesn't get built.
Sure.
And I think it may perhaps, if you're going to use that language, you need to clarify that the city is not responsible for building affordable housing. It's responsible for providing adequate opportunity sites.
Thank you, Bobby.
So it's clear.
Anyone else have anything on page eight? All right, page nine, we have the HE 1E. Anything else on page nine?
I have one, HE 1F.
Okay.
It says, work with private property owners, developers to plan for road and utility improvements necessary to support housing on key opportunity sites. In the event that these sites are developed, funding shall be done on a fair share proportion of cost. I think it should not say shall be, but to say may be done because there may be times when we want the developer to take the full, to pay the full costs. So it seems to me that that's, we could lighten that up a bit.
Okay. Anything else on page nine? 10?
10, I'd just like a question. When you're talking about the workforce housing, HE 1, HE 1I, can you restrict this, can you restrict this type of workforce housing or is this just, is this just pie in the sky here?
HE 1I, Victor, is one of those places that the substandard housing would apply.
That's the workforce housing.
HE 1I.
So, so a workforce, the workforce category that's envisioned here is something above 120% median income. So that's not an officially recognized income category.
Well, I didn't think it was a recognized period workforce housing. I didn't think it was recognized.
But it's something that the city could identify and then encourage that, that type of housing.
And can I ask, I'm just confused by Commissioner Minette's comments that these are substandard.
I think she's getting at the relaxing site development standards. Is that what you're concerned? I don't read that as, I don't read that as substandard. I read that as variances and setbacks and just being very flexible.
Exactly.
Because I, again. But that's not substandard to have a variance.
Well, if we, well.
Substandard, I think requires like, it doesn't have proper plumbing or.
It's density bonuses and setbacks are important for public safety and for, and for ambiance and for healthy housing. That's why we make those rules. We, to every, I mean, all through this, it's that we can relax them with affordable housing. You can relax the setbacks, you can relax the bonus densities so that you have.
But we're reading that, that that's, if you look at other projects that have come up to the commission, we won't approve something because they don't have the whole 10 feet. What we're saying is here is that it's giving the city the opportunity to err on the behalf of the affordable housing project coming up, just saying we're not.
I understand that, but I think to do that in a way that is, when we make those setbacks, anything.
But you're, I think defeating the whole purpose that we're trying to help these projects.
I don't think so. I think we should try to help these projects, but not at the expense of the standards that regular, regular people who aren't poor enjoy. And I think that those standards are asked to be relaxed because they don't pencil out otherwise. And I'm suggesting that we look at other ways to subsidize the penciling out to avoid the substandard waivers.
I understand what you're saying, but I think the fact that we get so many variance requests on setbacks, that it's, I don't think we're, it's not, I don't think it's a poor person issue. I think it just has everything to do with St. Helena's small, there's not a lot of sites and.
I don't think we get a lot of variances.
Regardless, can we consider that comment under advisement to council?
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, are we good with page 10? Do we have anything else to add?
HE B 2.
11. Anything on page 11? 11 was just a lot of cleaning up house. All right, page 12?
HE 2B, I have something. Let's see. Oh, yeah, this is another one. Modify the zoning ordinance to encourage higher density developments and restrict construction of large single, including current blah, blah, blah. Does there need to be some caveat language here from goal two, keeping in mind the balance of types of housing throughout neighborhoods and avoiding economic segregation? I was wondering, I, that's.
That's other places already noted, isn't it? You've already noted that several times.
No, I didn't.
No, it was in the, in the document here.
Those, well, those policies are right above and under goal two, promote a balanced type of housing throughout the whole community, so.
I think there's generally concern to not have it be decisive.
Victor asked for the.
Yeah, no, I know. I know. We're just trying to, yeah, all right. Page 12, anything else?
I had another one on, oh, sorry, on page 12. HE 2.4, where it says promote second unit production more aggressively and the more aggressively stricken out. I would recommend some sort of language that talks about, you know, rather than promoting the production, putting in place a program, as was mentioned. It's a little bit like, you know, I don't want to belabor at this point, this isn't going to be a replacement, but we don't, we don't have a program and we offer this bonus that doesn't count against FAR and that's part of our whole problem with development standards because we're putting them up against property lines and we're putting 50% FAR, real, true FAR, you know, in neighborhoods and medium density residential neighborhoods. And that's, that's kind of shooting ourselves in the foot. I mean, so that they sit empty for second homeowners when they have a guest come, like next door to my house. So I think, I think the important thing is that we, we put in a, put in place a program that actually is achieving what we want, you know? And we can leave it very, very, just very, rather than promote, we just say enact a second unit production or second unit program. We don't have one.
Could we just say incentivize homeowners who put in second units that are tied to affordable deed restrictions? So you could say you get a break on your property tax if you are willing to sign deed restrictions or whatever. I'm just throwing that off, so I don't know.
But to put a program.
But the point is incentivize homeowners to use second units to, for true, affordable use.
Okay, so just to clarify, so, so for any sort of incentives for second units, it would be second units that are restricted at some affordability level, right?
Right. It doesn't mean we don't want second units for other people. But if I absolutely agree with you, that these can both happen in parallel storylines and have good outcomes, but I think to Grace's point.
Amen.
But they're going to have the incentive with the FAR, then.
Or any incentive. I think you just say incentives and second units are tied specifically to deed restricted affordable.
To affordability and then otherwise you can build them, but you don't get incentives.
And I don't think that goes against families. I think that young families with one baby or whatever. I mean, I don't think we're implying that this is not good for families, just saying that we're helping, we're starting the process.
So you wanted to change the language to take program out? Is that what you?
No, program's not even there. It just says promote second unit production more aggressively. More aggressively is gone.
Yeah.
Okay, so I mean, we, we're promoting production of second units currently by just not counting it against FAR.
Yeah.
So people throw a second unit in because they can afford to.
We want to promote affordable second units.
Second units.
Yeah, so instead of using the term promote, it's tie incentives to deed restricted affordable housing.
So did someone already say something about HE 2.3? Be more aggressive, is that what you're talking, in promoting mixed use developments? My sense, more aggressive than whom? And I would suggest changing that to promote mixed use developments.
I agree with that.
I don't know about being more aggressive.
I'm sorry, which one, where is that?
HE 2.3, just above.
Just the line above.
Rather than be more aggressive in promoting, just promote.
Just say promote.
Well, then we've got, we've got to remember to get that in the general plan because we don't have mixed, we don't have mixed in the, in the general plan right now.
Oh, I think it's in the zoning. It's, it is, it is, in the land use element.
It's in a couple of districts.
Yeah.
Anything else on page 12? Okay, page 13? I feel like we're just kind of going to repeat saying comments before and if we could avoid that, I think that Victor definitely has got the first one.
On 2M is the same thing that we were just talking about, restricting them.
Anything else on page 14?
I did want to say on HE 2.8, and this is an old policy from 2009 that, you know, is not new news, but you know, a property owner did approach me about doing employee housing on, on a property, a large property that could, you know, count towards affordable housing. I mean, these are employees that are living and working in, in town. So that's, I think it's covered here, but I just think that's important to note and highlight.
Thank you.
Can I ask real quickly though, is that saying, I mean, maybe it's clearer to say.
Maybe it's just clearer to say, give priority approval process or, you know, prioritize approval to property, commercial property owners who are willing to tie and provide affordable housing units in site, on site.
Or incentive program.
Yeah, incentive programs for commercial properties that will build onsite workforce.
Particularly for their workers.
Right, yeah.
Because then that cuts down on.
Yeah, so we could fast track, any of the things we want to say, fast track, whatever, but if they're willing to come out of the ground with housing for their own workers, they're fast tracked.
Okay. Do we have any, just going back, anything else on page 13? All right, page 14. Okay, page 15.
I have something on page 15. I'm going to ask you, is HE 3 dot A, could you please explain to me what that means? I read it a bunch of times and it doesn't make any sense. I'm just wondering what it means.
Could we help?
Conversion of rental units to condos?
They're saying if people can't rent their apartments, they'll convert them to condos and sell them, and this limits you from being able to do that. It keeps people from, who have currently affordable rentals, to say it's a, I have a better financial outcome if I can flip these to condominiums and sell them. This prevents that. It's a good thing.
Well, it depends on if you're the one who wants to flip them.
Well, yeah, well, right. But it's, it's a good thing in the context of.
Of what we're trying to accomplish with the housing element.
I don't know if you can, it makes total sense to everyone else. I'm the only one who had trouble.
I mean, the code's already very restrictive. The condo conversion ordinance has a really high vacancy threshold that would allow you to do it. So, I mean, I would say in a lot of ways, we're already doing that.
Yeah. All right, anything else on page 15 or 16?
No.
No. All right, 17.
What's a linkage fee option? This, this HE 4 dot A didn't make any sense to me either, but this, just my ignorance maybe.
Which one are you saying, Bob?
It's HE 4A, the second bullet point down.
The linkage fee option?
Yeah, what are they, what are they talking about? I mean, if it's perfectly clear to everyone else, then it's just my problem, but if it's not clear to anyone else.
So.
Hopefully it's third to one of us.
So there is a requirement for commercial development to build affordable housing, but there's an option to pay a linkage fee instead of actually building the units.
Like an in lieu fee.
It's like an in lieu fee, exactly.
We call it in lieu?
Yeah, got it.
Yeah, let's.
All right.
We can use in lieu.
Yeah, we use in lieu.
So that, yeah, that may not actually mirror the language that's in the code, so we should, so we can use in lieu if that's not.
I think that'd be better.
I think we'll, we'll check to see what's in the code, so.
Thank you.
Christine, what do you mean by a linking fee?
It means in lieu.
Yeah, exactly. It would be an in lieu fee, but it may say linkage fee in your ordinance, I'm not, I'm not sure, we'll have to look.
Say linkage fee in your ordinance?
It may.
It may.
We'll have to look at the code.
Okay. I might look at that, I like in lieu fee better.
Anything on page 18?
I'm, I'm sorry, on page 17, HE 4 dot B, and this is something that came up tonight. Generate revenues for affordable housing through the transient occupancy tax. Either increase the transancy occupancy tax or increase the number of transient occupancy rooms and apply the increased revenue to support affordable housing. Now that that's in black and white in our housing element, not that we're going to reopen an earlier item from earlier tonight, but I, I think this is something that has a direct trans, you know, translatability for earmarking funds that are TOT funds generated additional, like it says, word for word, you know, increased revenue to support affordable housing. So, I, I mean, that, that comes under HE 4 point F too, which was the one that we talked about, pursue additional funding for affordable housing.
I mean, honestly, we could do what San Francisco does, and rather than do insurance for our workers, we could do an additional, an additional like 1% tax.
Housing tax.
For housing tax.
On your bar tab.
That could be in right now to what we just heard.
Right.
Or maybe.
Maybe that ought to go to council.
Maybe we could mention on HE 4F, that other thing that, that Commissioner Heil, I mentioned to you at the break, that, that there be, and I mentioned it to you too, Victor, that there be a designated amount of the TOT that would automatically every year go into housing, with a cap if it went over that, then it could be used for something else, or with maybe some constraints, but at least that there.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's clearly a council issue.
Right.
Right, but do you think?
Clearly council, you know, we'll take that up.
Well, it's stated in HE 4.
It's HE 4B.
So it doesn't.
So we can highlight. I just wanted to add emphasis, sorry. Bold, star.
Revenue has not.
Commissioner Heil really likes that one.
I like the idea of an additional tax.
Like San Francisco. Anything else on page 18? All right, moving on to page 19. Anything on page 19?
I had the, let's see, page 19. Objectives for implementing actions of goal four. The first bullet says, I, just a question is, how will we generate adequate funds? And what happens if we don't? And do we want to change the language to say consider or work toward, rather than say we will generate adequate funds?
Well, that's the, it's the.
That's the ultimate goal.
That's the objective, and so if you fall short of it, we just report on whether you've met your goal or not.
Okay, so we don't, we don't need to be careful about having, that language be too.
I wouldn't think so.
No.
I think it's fine the way it's written.
Yeah, the goal is through all these activities to generate funds to be able to support more.
Okay, and what is the purchase of, the last bullet, purchase of three existing housing units and conversion to regulated, we just have to do that over this time?
It's just a goal?
It's, okay.
Again, it's a goal. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, page 20.
So on any of these, if we've, if we've already done it, should they be stricken?
Like, which one?
The green building code ordinance? I mean, the 2013 building code is the.
Has a, right, so, so that has a green building code, but you could do, you could do a stretch code, a reach code, and go further than that, so.
Okay.
Okay, so that would give you the ability or the direction to do that.
I don't think it hurts to be in there twice.
Yeah, sure.
Anything else on page 20? 21? 22? All right, 23? And the rest is a matrix.
The rest is what?
The rest is a matrix?
Yeah.
I mean, I guess we could change, you know, timeframe, no longer, you know, by 2015. All right, thank you for that, everyone. Does anyone else have anything else that they'd like to mention?
Can I just say one thing that addresses, I'm sorry, I'm backtracking, back to 23, that addresses, I believe.
Sorry, I'm still learning this. I just want to make one suggestion on page 23 that might address some of the citizen comment earlier, is that we have listed what really amounts of these 31 units, which I think the consensus in the community was, we're, we're lowballing ourselves. So, instead of new constructive objectives, minimum new constructive objectives, you know, and, and start changing this language to be that these are. I like that suggestion. That these are thresholds, but by no means targets, and targets should fall much higher. I like that suggestion a lot.
The quantified objectives can be anything. It doesn't have to match your arena. So if you wanted to have higher objectives, we certainly can.
I think at this point, it would be arbitrary to change these numbers. I'm not saying change the numbers, what I'm saying is change the header to say that these, you know, these are minimum require, these are minimum targets with the objective to exceed them, and then leave your numbers as you've spread them out across the affordability levels. Yeah, I think that's.
That's good, Steve.
Okay, I would just say that we have to, we should leave the title, but put in that explanation.
Put a little, a last bullet, these are minimum.
Could we do an asterisk?
It's a requirement to have a quantified objective table.
Okay, so then, so I guess, well, that, okay, so leave new constructive objectives, that's your header, then below that you can write, you know.
Sure.
Meet or exceed the following, you know, strive to exceed the following threshold or minimum. Strive to above. Yeah. Because in general, what I was hearing loud and clear from the, the community, in addition to the fact that there were some arbitrary or somewhat questionable moves from one category to another of sites, and that those sites have not been vetted, and in many cases, the owners of those sites are not on board with this program, so that makes them somewhat arbitrary, is that we are really setting low minimum thresholds and that doesn't, we're not shooting for the right thing to do, we're shooting for the easy thing to do, and we want to move to the right thing to do.
Well, that's controversial, and I don't, I, I, I like the way you said it first, meet.
Oh, I'm not putting all that in the tart, I'm just discussing.
But I like when you said meet or exceed. I don't want to put the word strive in, I mean, I, I'm not comfortable with that. We, there are lots of things to consider, like water and all kinds of things, and sure, it'd be great to give everybody who works here a house.
Oh, yeah.
But we can't do it, you know what I'm saying? But I mean, or exceed would.
That last commentary was sort of my thought process, it was not.
Okay.
I say keep it, you know, meet or exceed the following threshold, that's.
Don't lock us.
Yeah, so that was just to acknowledge the folks that are. Does anyone else have anything else to say? All right, thank you, everyone, for, oh, your time?
A date for, for, for a study session.
Oh, do you want to put a date for the, the study session? Do you want to, do you want to just at least put it down so everyone who's watching?
I, I think we need to kind of dialogue a little bit on it. I'd be, I don't feel comfortable just kind of picking out a date, so.
All right, that's fine. Sure.
I mean, and I think this, this public comment kind of stays open until the document goes off to council, correct?
Sure.
I mean, you know, the citizens, if they find an implementing action that they really hate, they could send something to City Hall in the next week.
Mary Stevenson, Schley Court. I think you did a great job of getting this done so it can go to the council, that's good, but I would suggest instead of having another study session, because we've been studying this now for eight years, that the, that you consider taking some action so we have some data that we're studying. We, we, there's no reason why we can't get a clear idea of what, how second units are being used in our town. Takes time and money, which we ought to be able to do. There's also, we should be looking at that this group and the council should also be educated in the various ways of funding affordable housing and the cost financials and the financials that are, that, the, how you pencil this stuff out, because we have a lot of unrealistic items in these, in this plan now, including a coracle, that is not going to, you just, well, anyway. And, and thirdly, I think this could coincide nicely with this feasibility study, which is being done now, but I, I just, I just hate to see us schedule another study session, where we all sit here and I yell at you and you guys nod at me, and it's just, it doesn't work. So we need, we need facts, we need the strategy, we need information. The two things that were raised over and over again tonight is the second units and the opportunity sites. So I would suggest that you either hire somebody or ask staff to do real work on this, so that when we come back and study it, we have facts and not just more opinions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think that, I think that's the point, well taken, but I also think that if we had another study session, that would open up to different people who might have things that they would like to say.
Yeah, if I could add, I, I mean, what I heard tonight, I mean, there were a lot of good comments from the public, but I didn't hear a lot of those tied to specific policies, and I think that's the kind of dialogue that would be helpful to have. We could, I, I'll tell you right now, we don't have this, we don't have the staff time to study second units in any sort of systematic way that would be statistically accurate, and I don't really think we have the budget. I think really the issue with second units is that really, and maybe simplifying, but there isn't an issue. I think the commission hit on the point that maybe it doesn't make sense to have incentives for market rate second units that families just run out to their, to their grandmother or son or whatever, and, but if, but it makes sense if we're going to, looking at second units that are going to deliver at the affordability levels, that we come up with incentives for those. So I think we'd come up with all kinds of data. I think the data would show that we've got a heck of a lot of second units, and most of the people in them are either family members, and I'd say very few, if any, are rented to people that actually qualifies deed, for deed restricted housing. So I, I, I can tell you, I think that's what the, there was, the result of the study is going to be.
If I may through the chair, just with regards to the second point, which I think is a valid one and one that I think is a source of frustration for all people involved, and that is a more general question and, and point, which is at what, you know, what is, you know, kind of the, I'm trying to think the, the word, you know, the, not just the state requirement, but what is the expectation of the city with regards to how many units to identify in each of these? Because if something's just totally unrealistic, and it's just not going to happen, and it's been on the list for 25 years, and the owners are vehemently against it, I mean, does it make sense to identify 153 units when really, if we identified, you know, 50 really good potential units? I mean, wouldn't that be a better way to go about this?
Quality over quantity.
As opposed to kind of, quality over quantity, as opposed to kind of an exhaustive listing